Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole for the District of Squamish for Tuesday, June 11. Um, halin squalin quis taliknima flas Squamish mway way. Welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. I'm councillor Chris Peddingill, acting mayor for the month of June, so I will be chairing this Committee of the Whole meeting. Would someone like to move the adoption on the agenda? Revered Speaker my councillor Race. Thank you, all those in favor. Thank you. Just quickly before we start, if everyone is willing, I would like to structure the discussions today so that we have questions. And then before we jump to a motion, just a bit of an opportunity for council and possibly even staff to express where they feel they are, and then we can entertain motions. People have it much appreciated. So, the first item on the agenda is a funding request for the estuary master plan with Edith Toad and Kimberly Armour to present, please.
Hello, Mayor Council. Let's put the presentation here. Do you know how to do this? I always forget this one. Slide icon. There you go. Okay, there we go. So, we're going to do a brief presentation and then open it up to any questions and discussions. And the presentation is on a Squamish estuary master plan. So, a bit of background on this, as folks around the table know, the Squamish River Watershed Society has been working on the central estuary restoration plan. We were awarded funding for this in 2017, and it's focused on improving fish access and habitat impacted by the Squamish River training berm and the rail spur. So, as we got into project planning with this, it raised some questions not yet answered in any planning processes, and it drove us to how can we address some of these bigger questions? So, for example, a bigger question is what will be the sea dike alignment along the west side of town? How, if we modify the spit, would wind sports access that area? So, some of those types of questions come up in our consultation process for planning. And the map here just shows our project work areas for the central estuary restoration project, replacing culverts along the berm, realignment of the lower portion of the berm, and then reconnecting the tidal channels cut off by the rail spur line. So, we had a stakeholder meeting for our central estuary restoration project in March. An outcome of that meeting was the letter that was sent to Mayor and Council, and it was, the intent was to open up discussion on a, the potential for a master plan process. So, since that time, there's been subsequent discussion with the estuary management committee. The letter proposed that a master plan focus on sea dike alignment for the most part, and through discussion with the estuary management committee, the proposal that we put forward today is that it focus on the estuary management plan area. And the proposal is that rather than undertaking a master plan immediately, that we undertake a gap analysis in 2019 to define the scope of an estuary master plan for consideration in 2020 and beyond. And a master plan, so I'm going to be using the terms master plan and management plan interchangeably. We see them as one and the same thing. We've had an estuary management plan since the 80s, so it's really building on that legacy. So, we'll call it SEMP 4.0 for now. And it could draw on the existing priorities and develop a collaborative process for implementation between agencies and stakeholders. So, a bit of background on the estuary planning process. So, the estuary management plan, as I mentioned, it started actually in the 70s, and the first plan came out in 1982. And the general definition or that that plan has addressed is a process and plan for managing the land use in the estuary to ensure that the ecological integrity of the estuary is maintained as an intact ecological unit, and that there is sufficient land and water allocated for development. So, when I say a master plan or a management plan, that's the general scope as it's been defined in past. So, there was a version put out in 1981, and the plan area is as shown on the map there. That was updated in 1992 to include things like the transportation corridor, planning assessment areas. It was updated again in 1999, and this version was signed by all parties and stakeholders. And it defined a process for plan review within, referred development plan review within the area between jurisdictions. So, the 1982 plan had the estuary coordinating committee. That then in the 1999 plan became the estuary management committee, and the regulatory component of that was the estuary review committee. And so, those are the three versions of the plan. In 2007, the conservation area, which is now the current estuary, Squamish estuary, became a wildlife management area, and it's managed under the 2007 provincial plan for that, as well Site A, which is owned by Squamish Nation, is managed under the Site A management plan, and those are co-managed in both signed agreements. So, in the 1999 plan, plan area designations were defined. The green is the conservation area. There's a strip of black between the green and the blue, which is the transportation corridor, a 60-meter wide corridor in there designated for transportation. The blue is the industrial commercial area, and you'll see in the upper Mamquand Blind Channel, there's a bit of darker green, which is the planning assessment area slated for further assessment. The other map here is the Squamish Wildlife Management Area map, as well, it's showing Site A on the east side of the estuary, which is Squamish Nation owned. So, since 1999, there's been some changes to the estuary management plan area. There's been land use changes in the area designation. Example would be growing residential land use in the industrial commercial area, growing recreational land use in the conservation area, things like that. Senior government stepped away from the review process and the estuary management committee process, both federal, provincial, and now Squamish Nation as well are no longer a part of that. The 1999 plan was reviewed by the estuary management committee, and that's been completed. The habitat compensation identified under the 1999 plan has been completed, and new projects that are beyond the scope of the plan, for example, the central estuary restoration project are being identified. There's new data demonstrating the continued impact of the training berm. We've been doing fish monitoring for the last five years, and the culverts that were installed are not proving to be sufficient to provide access for juvenile fish to the estuary. Site B was developed for log handling. The oceanfront and the Mamquand Blind Channel have gone under development. The truck study supports continued service on the existing route along Lager's Lane. Flood protection mitigation priorities have been established. The MAST identifies action priorities in the plan area and more. So, this is just to give you an idea, the last time we had that holistic estuary management plan, it took a snapshot, and these are some of the key changes that have changed since that snapshot. So, do we need a estuary management plan 4.0? So, we've had a lot of plans. Why do we need another one to update our estuary management plan? And it just comes back to the original definition of what the estuary management plan was, wherein it was a plan and a process to maintain the estuary as an intact ecological unit and provide sufficient land base for water and, land and water for development. So, the question, if we need another update to our estuary management plan, I would suggest that we do, because currently we don't have a process to advance plans and priorities and manage the estuary between jurisdictions and across projects. We're really in that plan area treating everything on a project-by-project basis. So, the proposal today, coming away from the letter and informed by discussions with the estuary management committee, is that we do a gap analysis in 2019 to say what is an estuary management plan? What would the district priorities be to have an interjurisdictional review of, to move forward on certain priorities? So, for a gap analysis, where are we now? Where do we want to be? What are those priorities we need interjurisdictional process and input on? And how do we close the gap? So, the pictures here are shown, the estuary in 1969 before the development of the training berm, and then the middle, 1973, directly after the development of the training berm, as well as showing the dredge spoil site where the river was dredged and the dredge material placed in the estuary. 2016 showing the restoration of the dredge spoil site in the central estuary. And so, the question is, as an intact ecological unit, where do we take our planning to in 2020 so that we can get away from planning projects within the area on a project-by- project basis? So, examples of gaps and opportunities that we may want to consider within a master plan would be sea dike alignment adjacent to the estuary. Integrated flood hazard management plan calls for further definition of this, as well calls for the consideration of further discussion on the future of the training berm, as it would be redundant when we have, from a flood perspective, when a sea dike is in place. Design planning for flood infrastructure upgrades in the plan area and renewed habitat banking agreements. One of the functions of the original estuary management plan was a habitat compensation agreement to realize the designation of the wildlife management area. The Watershed Society in partnerships with various agencies completed that habitat restoration compensation work. So, as we move forward with new flood infrastructure projects and other major projects in the area, how can we align our compensation efforts to manage the estuary as a whole? Stewardship working group to support the active management of the WMA. The province designated the wildlife management area in 2007, but there's been no function to actively manage that between jurisdictions, and the province has also stepped away from the estuary management committee. So, as, as community members and for the district and other agencies doing work in the area, what is the process for active management there? They define the need for a stewardship working group within their plan, and there may be opportunity to realize that. Something else the Watershed Society has been looking at is blue carbon offsets and conservation land acquisition. We've been doing pilot studies to this effect and collecting data since 2014, and we do see opportunity within the upper Mamquand Blind Channel and perhaps other areas to actually assess blue carbon and have it be offsets under the district's climate action charter agreement. And then environmental assessment of the upper Mamquand Blind Channel to balance land development within an intact estuary unit. So, that area in dark green that was shown as the planning assessment area, development continues in that area, but there's been no holistic environmental plan or assessment for it, and so it's being handled, as I mentioned, on a project-by-project basis. A, a master plan would be a district-led process, but as I mentioned, these big questions are coming up, because the Watershed Society is currently engaged in a project that is beyond this planning scope. So, we're getting these big questions, and so, as I mentioned, it would be a district-led process, but, but there's a lot of opportunity, I think, in crossover between both our project and our master planning project. So, we would put the question to staff and councillors, how can we help move this along? The Watershed Society was recently, there was a motion passed at the estuary management committee table to have the Watershed Society develop a plan coordinator position to move forward the updates to the estuary management plan, and that the remaining funds be allocated to that plan coordinator. Since this idea of master plan came up, is it necessary to update the map, the management plan, or do we roll this into a, a new master plan? And so, also the collaborative working group. So, our working group for the central estuary restoration project has all levels of jurisdiction agencies and stakeholders at the table. The estuary management committee currently does not, so is there any opportunity to, it's the same group of people, and expand the discussion there into master planning? As we mentioned, through the last two years, we're, we're getting some of the big questions on what a master plan should address, so we're happy to share that with staff and their consideration. We're undertaking estuary monitoring at present, and we're happy to share that data and have it inform what a master plan could be. And as I mentioned, we're also engaged in natural capital and flood mitigation assessment through blue carbon, and with reconnecting of the central estuary and the river across the training berm, there's opportunities, I think, there to reduce flood stress by reconnecting the lower flood plain. So, next steps and recommendations. Define the scope for a gap analysis based on priorities in the estuary management plan area that require a process for interjurisdictional and area-wide planning and approval. And the recommendation is that council direct staff to develop a scope of work for an estuary management plan gap analysis to be undertaken in 2019 and used to inform the estuary management plan updates for 2020 and beyond. If the Watershed Society can help staff with that, we are happy to provide that capacity, but it would be a district plan, so we would look to staff to set that direction. And just before we open it up to discussion, some folks probably know that we've been working on phase one of the central estuary restoration project, and we've just completed it. And so, I thought I'd share a few pictures while we're here. So, the top left corner is a juvenile Chinook salmon. These are the guys coming down the river that were trying to get into the estuary and are currently being flushed out to the How Sound by the training berm. The picture directly beside that is the existing culvert that was in place that we've now replaced. It was installed in 1994 and pretty heavily damaged. The other picture is our brand-new box culvert that is flowing very well, and it does appear to be facilitating fish access. And then the overall aerial view is the location, the yellow arrow, the location of our box culvert. So, with that, I would open it up to questions.
Councillor? Sure. So, partly a comment, because I think it was April that I attended a meeting that was hosted by the Watershed Society, which I've told other people I thought was just a very remarkable meeting, in the sense that you managed to get all the stakeholders in the same room at the same time, and I'm not quite sure how you pulled that off, but that was quite amazing to me. But I came away from, from that meeting, and could you go back to the first slide? Because we've had presentations before about the phase one part, the part you just spoke about, and when I came away from that meeting, I think the vision was that we would start watering the estuary more or less at the top of the green, very close to the top of the picture. And that entailed dike issues and so forth, and it became apparent to me that very quickly the district had to get involved. There was all kinds of district infrastructure there, and, and we just had to somehow be involved. We were just peripherally involved in the first phase, but the second phase was a lot bigger. But, but it has the potential, I think, and somebody else in the meeting made the comment, to be a real model project of how we can really do that. And so, I, I don't have a question really. I'll wait to hear from staff to see how they'll chime in on this, but, but I think there is a significant need for the district to become involved, and you're right, it will be a district project when you're talking about moving dikes and things like that. But I, I guess the question is, and I am correct in saying that we're now talking about sort of introducing the water to that area more or less at the top of the green, is that?
So, within the scope of our project, our next phase is the realignment, so the lower portion of the berm. The future of the training berm is a point that the integrated flood hazard management plan addresses that as a point for further discussion. To the top of the green, as my understanding, would be redundant when a sea dike is in place. So, there would be opportunity for full reconnection of the lower flood plain.
And then the only purpose of it would be to access the spit for rinsing, for example? You could have it wide open in a whole bunch of different areas, I assume?
So, an estuary typically has, like, an estuary in the absence of that structure would move and migrate across the flood plain. If the structure is to remain, that would continue to impact that function. So, would it be full removal, partial removal? That would need to be decided in a master plan process.
You proposed a gap analysis for this year, but then also said SEMC was looking at allocating funds for updating the Squamish estuary management plan. So, is there a way to go back to SEMC and say, maybe could we use that funds to do a gap analysis and move towards this master planning process?
Yeah, so at our last SEMC meeting, the, there was support for the master plan process, and the recommendation was to report back to SEMC on the scope. And so, I would look to staff to see if there's an opportunity to allocate those funds towards a gap analysis.
My general question is that there's never capacity in our staff ranks, so I'm loathe to sort of move a motion today that we direct that without knowing that we can find the capacity somehow. So, I guess that's my question to staff.
Through the Chair, thank you. My first reaction to the request is rather than start something in 2019 where we have zero capacity of staff, everything is planned, workforce planned, we're hanging on with everything else to deliver as it is, and there would be two options. One would be that staff go away and figure out how to shift priorities to lead a gap analysis, even if someone else is doing it, as you can appreciate, management consultants still work. Or a CAO by preference would be that we look at the staging of this, so a gap analysis and a master plan going forward from 2020, and council could consider that in terms of directing staff priorities within your strategic plan. But I leave it to council to direct staff to look at whether it's 2019 or 2020.
Councillor Stoner? Thanks for the presentation and my history pieces. I might, I might find my mouth here in terms of asking for clarification on where SEMC is at, and how this process is dovetailing into it? What are the level of overlap in terms of the people at the table? And then, I guess, building on Mayor Elliot's question, where and how can we, should we just kind of like drop the whole SEMC process and move it out? Or like, what, what is the hangup there?
Chair. So, I'm Carolyn Ashikian, Environmental Coordinator with the district, professional biologist, and I currently sit as Chair of the estuary management committee. The estuary management plan has been achieved. The projects laid out in that plan have been achieved, and that's the sentiment around the SEMC people. Senior government agencies are no longer participating in the process, no longer at the table. They have put that in writing and written correspondence that they have no capacity to participate in this, in this type of process moving forward. And this was a couple of years back now that they indicated that. So, the committee is, has been looking for a way to move forward to address current needs, because it's not like there's an absence of current needs. So, those have been addressed at the SEMC table, those have been addressed also, and come out through the MAST. So, whether, the marine action strategy, thank you. So, so that's a great point that you raised, Councillor Stoner, and a master plan could very well simply take the place of trying to update the SEMP. So, rather than do that, create something new instead.
All along question, most planning processes dictate that plan should be updated after five or so years. Is there any requirement within SEM, within the SEMP that that was the vision, that that plan be updated on a regular basis?
Do you want me to take that one?
Sure.
When it was signed off in 1999, the estuary management plan had within it a structure to be reviewed and updated every five years. We're at this point, and it's never been updated. A few efforts have been made, and whether it's from capacity or financing or variations therein, it's, it's been a real challenge. And now, with the signing off in 2007 of the wildlife management area, the scope of the original plan has really changed in recent years.
Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. I grew up with a plan, and therefore I am relieved at your presentation today in that there is a change in approach from the document we received earlier, that you are proposing to maintain the geographic scope of the present SEMP area. And there are multiple reasons for that map, and transactions, habitat issues shared, all kinds of issues are shared between the west side and the east side of estuary. The issue, I, the question I have, or assumption I would ask is SEMP 4.0, and the idea of the master plan coming up following discussion of the resolution to press ahead with a plan coordinator, terms of reference, is that basically comes down to the participation or non-participation at the table of the federal government, provincial government, and Squamish Nation. I guess I can, shall I assume that is being the key reason? About two years ago, we had a meeting. Quorum was always difficult, or some times was difficult, and unfortunately at that occasion, we did not have quorum. But the persons present from Squamish terminals, Forest Industries, Squamish Environment Society, and Mike Nelson, representing professional biologists, and yourself, Carolyn Ashikian, we discussed a concept of a two-tier structure whereby these folks that don't have staffing resources to attend meetings, and in that meeting it also includes the Squamish Nation, could be part of a governance level. This would leave, quorum could be redefined, and the people that do and always do turn up to these meetings and representing those sectors can roll up their sleeves and get on with it, if you like. So, a management tier and a governance tier. Because from time to time, we will always, and in the MAST process and implementing the marine action strategy, we will need to confer and consult and engage with senior governments at Squamish Nation. And so, we would do that in that two-tier structure. I'm just, just regurgitating what we came up with two years ago and discussed, but it just never went further. We just lost momentum on, and time and staffing. So, that's what I, I put that idea forward and suggest that, given that that is the key issue, that perhaps that could be revisited and discussed with senior government. As Carolyn would know, we attended together an event in Vancouver with all kinds of senior federal government people, and it was not their assumption that they'd quit, accept their estuary management plan. Similarly, Dave Southern assures various local stakeholders that we're not out of SEMP. We just don't have the time to attend those meetings. The provincial government led us to, finally, is the landlord for Squamish terminals and is a leaseholder at Site B, and so we will always need to refer to them. So, I just put it to you, perhaps this is an idea that could be discussed with them. And perhaps, since I was a member of the committee, you have discussed other angles on governance structure. But we do need to visit governance structure, also that's identified in the marine action strategy implementation framework.
Through you, Chair, if I may. To kind of boil this down, SEMC, as you pointed out, no longer has senior government at the table. The central estuary working restoration project does. The questions that are being raised at the SERP table are master plan questions, and so we see there being an opportunity to define a new governance structure. I believe that the priorities are for the most part established in existing plans between the integrated flood hazard management plan, marine action strategy, and others. And it's basically within those plans defining the key priorities that the district wants to move forward on in a time-sensitive nature and define a interjurisdictional process to manage that. So, that's kind of in a nutshell how I would see a master plan, serving the district in realizing major infrastructure upgrades and also managing the estuary as an intact ecological unit.
Mr. Wickham?
Thank you, Chair. I guess my, my thoughts on this, and building on Ms. Quamish's comments about needing some time to step back and think about what this means to us. time to step back and think about what this means to us. We're really seeing, we're talking about SEMP, we're talking about expanding the project level master plan around the training berm and the impacts on our infrastructure and on waters or on windsports and that sort of thing, out to a broader scope that covers the entire estuary. Certainly there's a gap there that the current SEMP has not been updated and we'd all like it to be. But I think there's a larger issue that Counselor Stoner and Anderson have brought up here that we're really looking at a governance question. We're looking at, the comment was that this should be a district-led process. In the past, it hasn't been a district-led process. Maybe it needs to be in the future. On May 22nd, we were directed to council, by council, another committee, a whole meeting where we're looking at SEMC and the marine action strategy and the interplay and governance structure, we were instructed to go back and attempt to revitalize SEMC and rewrite SEMP. And a year has passed now, sort of being a very recent meeting where this has been discussed again. And I think, I think it moves staff before really having a lot of comment on what we feel the government's role should be, or sorry, the district's role should be in this and how we would interact with senior levels of government and the future, our future with SEMC, that we need a little bit of time to step back and look at what's been going on in the last year and how our attempts to revitalize have gone. So that we can come forward and kind of break this deadlock as we, we're a little bit spinning, trying to find this governance structure. I think we need to attack that first and foremost. And hopefully in 2020, be in a position to actually have the right people at the table, right leadership, right governance structure, and revitalize SEMP 4.0 or some other brand.
So I'm going to take a comment, I'll give to Counsel Reese and actually ask if Counsel wants to make a better motion if it's a little wrong comments. You know, like a lot of what's been proposed here in general, but I don't have a good enough sense about where this fits in our priorities overall. And so I would personally like a little better sense of that. Looking at the geographic scope, I just keep on thinking back and I'm getting more nervous the more money we look at spending here. Spent some time with, I believe it's some marine biologist and other scientists who had experience with a Russian LNG facility. They observed that the salmon, this was in a bay, the salmon tended to hug the shores and access the, all the rivers and estuaries along the shores, along the whole bay. And they found when the facility went in, although there's no permanent physical barrier, the salmon stopped going past the facility. And so only half the bay was ever used. And so I think, you know, we don't know that what's proposed at Woodfinger, if it's going to go ahead, and if so, if it'll have the same impact. But in the back of my mind, that's one of those things where do we do a whole bunch of work here, spend a whole bunch of money and then find out the salmon just aren't going to go past Woodfinger and just don't access the estuary anymore. So even though that is outside the geographic matter, I hope that as we move forward, something or some way to look at that and consider that. Counsel Reese?
Oh, Ms. Stone. We've been doing scientific studies through How Sound studying juvenile schnook outmigration since 2013. And it initially was looking at a conflict between hatchery schnook and wild schnook. We did DNA clippings. And one of the sites we looked at was Bill Creek and Woodfinger Creek. And the most recent study we completed in 2017. And at no time did we really see any gaps, just in terms of different studies, different times of year, different priorities. And we're still far from understanding how the schnook function, the whole life cycle. It's extraordinarily complex. We turn to our colleagues at Fisheries and Oceans Canada, they don't have the full understanding of the full picture. So all we can do is do snapshots, which is the best that we can do as biologists at this time. But what I can firmly say is we know juvenile schnook need to have a residency period in the estuary for survival. And by not having access to the estuary, by being shot right out into How Sound, we're losing that. So that's what's driving our project. But just a bit of background on the function history of schnook salmon and on the estuary.
Counsel Reese?
Thank you. And so I've heard of two, possibly three plans that might be sort of doing the same thing or wanting to do the same thing. And so I think that has to be rationalized. And also this is now grown in scope for me at least. Again, I thought we were dealing with the colored area there, but now there's a potential going into the blind channel and cattle and slough and is that habitat restoration or is there some other purpose to that? And so I kind of came into this thing thinking habitat restoration. It wasn't the whole estuary, but that was more or less the colored area there for the schnook salmon. So I think this thing has to be scoped out. I personally think, although I recognize the stresses on the district staff and I'm sensitive to that, personally think that the district ultimately will have to lead this thing. I don't have confidence in the province or the feds leading it. I think the difference from 1999 until now is that they have significantly pulled back in a variety of different areas and just as a variety of budget cuts over successive governments. And so I think if we want to see this done, we are going to have to be prepared to take a lead role in it. But I don't want to dump this on staff's work plate next week. I know that's not workable. So I would prefer staff kind of thinking about this and coming back. I mean, personally, I'm very much supportive of this thing going ahead in some scale. I'm more concerned about the colored area than the whole estuary at the moment frankly. But, but I do recognize there's a whole bunch of moving parts to this, dikes and other infrastructure that we just have to deal with as well as budgeting staff time. So I prefer staff to have a look and kind of come back to us and say, this is how we might see it unfolding and give us a timeline.
Mayor Elliott, if you'd like to post a motion maybe as well?
I think for me, happy for staff to bring back a proposal, but it doesn't require us to have, with respect, a governance model worked out. I mean, that's what the gap analysis and scoping part of this process would be for. And figure out how we fund it. And I don't think all the funding needs to come from us. There's, you know, this would give us time to look at who else can fund this. So there's programs through the federal government, provincial government, that the watershed society can access. So I know in the original letter it's $50,000, but I don't think we have to carry that from a budgeting point of view. When you think about the importance of estuaries in, as a natural asset that could offset millions of dollars of investment in our diking infrastructure, that has appeal. Like the more we can let nature do its job and spend less on built infrastructure that we have to maintain, you know, we've included natural assets in our stormwater management asset plan. And I think, you know, doing a master plan and looking at how this estuary could expand and actually reduce the flooding risk along the Squamish River is really important work if we, you know, align or realign or take out that training berm entirely. So there's, you know, going back to the original concept of having a plan where industry is involved, recreational users, environment, and just allowing SEMC to, you know, say thank you to them for all the work that that, where it got us to and the work that it's done. And then bring it into a modern context where Mast exists and that revitalized master planning process happens, I think makes a lot of sense. We've been sort of crawling along with SEMC and it didn't make sense to me in the beginning of my last term and we're still talking about it at the beginning of my second term. So there's, there's an idea here, I think it's time has come to just really move this into the 21st century. So I'd like to see if there's a way to do the scoping and the gap analysis this year using funds potentially from SEMC, repurposing those funds. That would be helpful. Having staff look at their priorities, is there a way to oversee, a consultant to do that gap analysis as well as the scoping work so that we could see how big the piece of work is in 2020 that we would need to lead? And also as part of that, look at funding opportunities so that it's not just us carrying the bill. There's a lot of people with a vested interest in this. So I'm not sure why we would pay the whole way on that. So I suppose if you wanted me to put a motion on the floor, I think it would be that council directs staff to look at possible options in scoping a gap analysis for 2019 and bring it back to council for consideration.
Just a second. Counsel Reese, thank you.
Can I amend, make an amendment?
And the funding model?
To include the funding model and repurpose funding on SEMC to standard.
Family amendment?
Yep.
So I need discussion on the motion. May I not call it, oh, Counsel Anderson?
Yes, I just wanted to have us reaffirm that we shall proceed with the assumption that we are working within the present SEMP planning area, including the blind channel. There are agreements, land transactions, habitat and planning issues, including where to locate recreational facilities, transportation facilities that involve the whole. So just wanted to stress that or ask that or have that confirmed.
Mayor Elliott?
I think that's the work of the scoping.
Any further discussion? Seeing a call question, all those in favor. You want to post? Counsel Anderson will post. Motion varies. Thank you.
So, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the Constellation Festival update and I thought it was important to give a bit of extra time to manage the plan. But we are behind a little bit, so if there's, find a way to cut a bit of time off this presentation, that would be fantastic. I'm still very interested.
Come on, you've got all day, you've got all day to play with.
Very big agenda today.
Challenge accepted.
Thank you. But I am eager to hear those comments.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, Chair, and Council. My name is Devon Gess and I am the Manager of Arts and Culture here at the District of Squamish, for those in the audience and watching. I wanted to provide, I'm also the staff lead and liaison for Squamish Constellation Festival in terms of district oversight and management. I wanted to, before jumping into the management plan, the high-level management plan reviews, I wanted to provide a brief overview of the process that staff and relevant authorities of having jurisdiction lays to provide the context to the summary of the plans that are going to be presented to you today. So for those watching, Squamish Constellation Festival will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, July 26th through 28th, each evening until 11 o'clock PM at Henrickson Field. The Squamish Constellation Festival, within their agreement with the district, has a series of management plans with KPIs and measures in place to protect community assets and life safety issues. And those two categories, or they're broken down, will be coming to council as well as today on the 25th to, for the organizers to provide you with an overview of how the planning is going. So today we'll be talking about the medical management plan, accommodations, communications, and environmental plan. For context, the Constellation Festival planning groups are as follows. That is fairly small, but that just shows how many great stakeholders are at the table in terms of eyes on the prize and keeping the festival and our community both safe and intact. So you will see the authorizing jurisdictions or relevant staff members who endorse the plan, who are responsible for endorsing the plans on behalf of the district with the Constellation Festival. I can go back to that slide just for context. But the goal of having high engagement with the district is reducing risk through good planning, mitigating risk, reducing probability of any instances and managing intended impact. So initial meetings with stakeholders took place in the late winter, draft plans were due March 15th, first round of general district feedback or authorizing agencies, second round of plans were due May 30th. And the plans that will be presented to you today at a high level represent the endorsed plans from staff and the authorizing jurisdictions. So now I will turn it over to the Constellation Festival management team. I can leave that up for a few more moments for context, but the Constellation Festival does have their own plans in which I will hand over the reins right now unless anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Devon. I'm Tamara Standers and this is Kat Matthews. Catherine, that's your phone. And we are half of the operations or operations and management team for Constellation Fest. Thanks so much for seeing us. So I'm going to just talk very briefly about the communications plan that we have in place while Kat gets that together. We just want to make sure that everybody knows what we're doing within the community so that nobody's surprised by any of it. So up on our website and also the District of Squamish website, we're going to have the details on all of the following. Also through social media, we're going to get it out. So what we are and what we're striving to accomplish, our hours, box office, help center, that will include lost and found, accommodation available, transportation available, parking. And those two are kind of pivotal as well as highway traffic on getting some approval from you, which we're excited about getting. Road closures, our zero waste policy, which by the way, was highlighted on CBC yesterday along with the Heritage Festival, was so exciting. It was, it was cool. They love Squamish on CBC. Our water information, festival cleanup, environmental protection, fire protection, you know, emergency services, security plans, field closures, our ticket info because we want to sell all the tickets, volunteer information, and we want all the volunteers, and of course our contact info. And within that, like it's all ready with Christina Moore and she's, she's happy with it at this point. But if you wanted to take a full look at it, we can get you all of the information that we've got, which will be up online on both of our sites and you can add to it in any way you see fit.
So I wanted to put up these two, sorry, these two site maps. I understand they're a little small that you can see, but on the left you have the overall usage overview. So at the bottom, the red line, that's Finch, where we're having a street closure as we're using that for all of our buses and transportation. Immediately up above that in the green is the festival site. Immediately above that is Lager Sports, who's being very kind to let us use their parking lot. Above that, we have to the left in blue, parking at the all-weather fields, bike valet and the smaller at the BMX, staff camping at the municipal campgrounds. And then up to the left in blue, the Brennan Park parking that we're hoping to have. It's not fully approved yet and that'll hopefully go through soon as we need to get parking on sale. And then overflow camping in the ball up to the northeast of the, of the blue, parking at Brennan Park. I put this up here because today we're talking about the environmental plan and a lot of the environmental plan considers human pedestrian traffic and what they can leave behind as they move. And then also mitigating illegal camping, which, you know, the more we have people moving through here, the more we need to control for, for that in our immediate vicinity. And then to the right, we have the site map, which is just our festival site, which isn't as important for today's conversation except for pointing you to, I don't think I have an actual pointer. In the middle, it's so small, halfway down the site, kind of on the left, is the medical tent. So it's conveniently located halfway from side to side, so no matter what side of the site you're on, you can get to the medical tent pretty easily. It's a, if you don't, I feel like people are still looking for it, so I'm just going to try to describe it a little bit better. Where the baseball backstops meet, there's that space where the baseball backstops meet and then the medical tent is right. and then the medical tent is right in between that. Okay. Moving right along.
Did you see it? Go back.
Was that saying Nude Saddlein' Pod?
Yes, sorry.
That's right.
Yes, Nude is the RTD, Ready to Drink Beverage Company.
The beverage, not a wave.
That's correct. Yes.
But we thought it was a clever name anyway, it's a nude bar.
I'm expecting fully clothed staff and visitors to, to the bar. So going into the medical plan, we have contracted Odyssey Medical Incorporated. They do a lot of events, including some of the Squamish Valley Music Festival ones. Our onsite medical team includes that 20 by 30 tent that I pointed out, with a separate 10 by 10 triage tent, so you have mostly just like drunk tanks in the 20 by 30. Right next to that, we also have two accessible porta-potties for people that need a little extra help. We will also have roving teams around the site for medical, in addition to medical dispatch that will be sitting with the security dispatch and working together, and then VCEHS will be onsite, so we have an ambulance onsite for the duration of the event. Through our conversations with Odyssey, they believe that we are a low-risk event for fentanyl overdose. However, we will have expanded coverage because it's the day and age that we live in, so we don't want to put our heads in the sand and think that that doesn't exist. We'll have that both IV intramuscularly and then intranasally, the big spray. Also included in the medical plan, but I'm not going to go over it because it's like detailed details, but just so you know that it's in there, the event medical communications and how the dispatch works with the rest, and then how VCEHS and Odyssey work together, event-wide emergency procedures, which you'll see more of in the emergency management plan that's coming up on the 25th, event stop procedures, which again are part of the emergency management plan, which you'll see, and then medical tent evacuation, as it's slightly different from a full-site evacuation, as they have more things to worry about. This is kind of a chart, again, kind of hard to read here, but it starts with injury or illness, and then goes into, if the medical team can be contacted, then great, it goes straight to our medical team. If they can't be contacted and it looks like it's a 911-type emergency, then we just go straight to 911. That's the whole point of having medical onsite though and on radio, so that they're easily accessible. And then moving into if they can, if it's a minor or critical, it moves into a different path, right? So anything minor, we try to treat exactly where it happened with the roving teams. If it's like someone is, has like a minor bleeding thing, you know, you can just treat it onsite, like they tripped and skinned their knee, you can just treat it right there. If it's not treatable there, we, they go to our medical tent, which is that 20 by 30 medical tent, and then if that escalates, then we put them on the ambulance and they go to the hospital.
Interject for a moment?
Yes.
The medical health officer that has been reviewing the medical plan has looked at the demographic and the breakdown of those in attendance currently within the festival and has approved this plan based on its impact to Squamish General Hospital.
Thank you. So as I said with, now you can see this a lot easier, but as I said, the medical tent is located in kind of middle, but then the best part about it is they are only 100 feet away from the ambulance, so transporting anyone from the tent to the ambulance through the X, which is a gate, is a really quick and easy process if we have an emergency medical situation. Moving on to environmental, this is broken up, the first part is more how we're handling it from a human situation, and the people that we're using to make it happen, and then the second, looking more at infrastructure closures and signage. So we'll have roving, security and waste teams, which you'll see more detailed of where those will be in the next four slides. The waste teams will swipe three times a day with an emphasis on animal attractants and food waste, and then security will sweep four times a day with an emphasis on illegal camping and habitat protection, since we are close to the Mamcom River, which is one of the slides that's coming up. We'll also have traffic control at key intersections and parking attendants to act as a deterrent to just leaving waste all through the parking lots. Through our waste management plan, which you'll see again on the 25th, we have more information on where additional porta-potties and waste receptacles will be. With our infrastructure closures and signage, we have, as I said, porta-potties and waste receptacles and designated hotspots, no camping and parking signs, neighborhood car barricades, there will be more information on that in the transportation plan, but mostly just having barricades at the neighborhood entrances off of loggers. And then trail closures immediately next to the festival grounds, which you'll see in this slide. So the red line in the center is Finch, our festival grounds are immediately above it. The two blue dots at the top are for, to show where the parking attendants are at the BMX and the, and the All Weather Fields, just to give you an idea of where, what you're looking at. And then you can see the site that is like marked between 99 and the corridor trail. So that is like when I was talking about the four times a day waste, or four times a day security, three times a day waste, we'll have people patrolling through those areas, making sure that we aren't giving bears a bunch of food on the trails and pitching tents and disregarding wildlife. So that's one of our main, and then you can see the red line on Finch goes up a little bit into the trail, so the trail, like from the center kind of up through the BMX, that's what we want to shut down to just regular traffic. So if anyone's coming up through the trail south of Finch, they'll hit Finch, which is closed, and where we have a lot of transportation coming through, and we'll have a bunch of TMPs there to guide people to the corridor trail instead of those inter-Loggers, Loggers Creek Nature Trails. Our second main area of focus, you can see the monitored area up top north of Centennial, which is the river area, we'll have a bunch of different no parking and no camping signs along, along that area, as we've heard that these are places that are most likely to be abused. And then we'll also have traffic control at the five-point intersection. Right now we have a lot more than just that one dot that's there, because we are, again, planning to have parking at Brennan Park and All Weathers, the All Weather Fields. But one of the parts of that traffic control person is to not let people go east on Centennial for festival traffic, and so just stopping the people as they go by, and if they have local traffic, and, I mean, people will lie and do things like that, but most people, right, will see that as a deterrent. And then we have the local neighborhoods, this will be, so there is a lot of open area around there, kind of on the east, which we're a little worried about illegal camping, so that's part of the security sweep here, and then obviously a waste sweep as well because we want to be good neighbors and not have a bunch of trash thrown through the neighborhoods. Again, those will have the barricades as you go off of loggers to help deter people from going in there, but we're still going to sweep the neighborhoods, picking up trash as we go and keeping a presence to prevent illegal camping. The last area that we highlighted, so we weren't able to have the space for onsite camping, which is why we are partnering with Chigai Ranch and Kohani, and the Kohani is in, they, sorry, are in operation all the time, so I didn't include that here because I feel like their waste management and environmental plans are just part of their daily operations. Since Chigai is not in daily operation, they have a TUP through this year that has a safety and security plan that will be coming from them and is part of their TUP process. But then we included shuttles as a transportation, so if you buy camping at Kohani or Chigai, there's a shuttle that runs all day circulating to take you to and from the festival site. So because of that, we don't think that there will be walking routes from the campsites, so we don't think there will be a ton of trash as people migrate from either of the campsites because they will be on buses. The buses are dropping off on Finch at the loading zone, as well as some shuttles that you'll hear about in the next section, from Vancouver and Whistler, and so we have added porta-potties and waste receptacles there, so that as people are queuing, they don't just throw their trash all over the place, and we also have a good amount of buses to prevent long queues. Finally, the accommodations plan. Right now it's looking like we'll have an attendance of around 5,000, with our ticket data so far showing 81% local, with an estimated out-of-town attendance for 950 people. So with our Chigai and Kohani campsites, we're estimating that they can hold around 1,000 campers. The, we'll have shuttles to and from Vancouver and Whistler that will do a minimum of 220, and then according to Tourism Squamish, the accommodations here are 960 hotel beds with a 1920 based on double occupancy, and then around 250 short-term rentals, which have assorted occupancy rates. With illegal camping, which again is a part of basically all of these plans, so I understand that that's a big part for the district as well, we'll message that anyone that's caught illegally camping is subject to ticketing fines, and also will lose their pass to the festival as a deterrent. And then in addition, we will message the legal camping locations, which is part of the communications plan, and it will be on our website to push people to the legal camping locations as defined by the recently published brochure from the district.
So I will open to questions, I just keep in mind we will be having another presentation on the 25th, so if we can save some time. Counselor Anderson?
Just like to acknowledge your attention to the illegal camping issue. The last festival over the three-year period was a great big learning curve on that topic for the whole community. I wonder if I might be able to ask you to pull up Area 1, if you could. I see that you have no camping signs in places where they're identified on your Area 2 map, which is the Mamcom River.
Yes.
However, during the first two years of the festival, there was quite a lot of unauthorized camping in Rose Park, Smokeless Park and some private land nearby. So I'd like to suggest that there's a couple of places you might put signs there, and that is at the entrance to Smokeless Park, where the kiosk is, at the entrance to Rose Park, where there's another sign board, and there's also a trail along the channel which is heading into private land, that would be a third place to put a sign, and that would be very effective. But last year at the festival, they actually had two persons patrolling that area, but it was very impressive what they achieved in catching up with that whole issue, and I think that you're, you look to be in good position to be ahead of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Stone?
I don't see it there, but where is the bike parking?
That...
It's probably coming in the transportation direction.
Yes, so that's at the bike valet, see the yellow square in the, kind of in the center? And then to the left of that is the bike valet at the BMX.
And then my follow-on question was, on the last slide, you said that you kind of really considered walking route because most people would be getting on buses.
That was just for the campsite.
From the camping.
From the campsite.
Right.
Right.
And then, but you also noted that about 80% of ticket sales have been local, so anticipating that most of those folks are probably going to ride bikes or walk, is that considered as part of the information?
Right, and so if you, if you look at the corridor trail, which is the yellow on, and you see the blue, like kind of the aqua-ish, that's where we're adding additional porta-potties and waste, so that as people walk through the corridor trail, there's like halfway from downtown, there's a stop.
No, that's all. Nothing, thank you very much, and thank you very much for saving us some time.
Really fast.
Thanks for having us.
Just looking at the schedule, do you want to take a three-minute bio break?
Three minutes?
Yep. Welcome back, and I'd like to introduce Christina Moore, our Communications Manager, to talk to us about community.
Good, good morning, Council, thank you, Chair. As mentioned, I'm Christina Moore, Communications Manager at the district. I'd like to introduce Bonnie Warburton. Bonnie is a Quest University Canada student who has been doing an internship with my department over the last three weeks, and Bonnie has been instrumental in doing quite a bit of the research that I'm going to present today to bring to you, so thank you, Bonnie. I should also mention, she has put many of these slides together, so they're really quite lovely. You can't take credit for them. Mayor Elliott has challenged the communications team to help council communicate your work and progress through some creative updates to the community to inform citizens of what has been transpiring at the council table beyond just the minutes and the great work that our local media do in terms of presenting council progress and council work and decision-making. So today I'm going to propose two ideas for discussion. The objective today is to really, is to bring a couple of ideas forward to discuss with you, to get your feedback, and whether you'd like to proceed with one or both of them, or if you prefer to take a different direction, and then based on your feedback, determine what our next steps can be from here. So I want to introduce the idea of a podcast. Many of you have probably listened to podcasts over the last couple of years as they've grown in popularity. We've had a number of discussions with Mayor Elliott about how a podcast might support council's work, and this conversation began in our department a few months ago. Sandra Kennick, our web and graphics technician, had brought the idea forward to look at podcasts as a way to bring to light a lot of the details around the conversations that happen at this table, whether it be, in particular, her idea was around the Wildlife Working Group, and her idea, and in particular about bear management. Her point was that, you know, as we, as we work to engage the community and try to bring a level of appreciation to the decisions that are made around this table, that they would, that it would be well-served for us to sort of dig deeper and, and share more aspects of the trade-offs and the science and the data and the expert views and, and the trial and error and the desire to do good, all of the things that sort of happen in the conversations here, that potentially, that mostly the, the community really doesn't, doesn't see and doesn't get an understanding of. Sandra and Meg Tomb, our Wildlife Educator, recorded two pilot podcasts that really got the momentum going. That has, that led into Bonnie's internship here, that has brought us to where we are today. So when we started to look at how to share council work with citizens, it became clear to us that a podcast with the depth of information that they can provide would be a well-suited tool. Podcasts provide a really unique format that's suited to moving past the social media snapshot and providing the nuanced, personal, deeper story behind policymaking. Podcasts can go into more depth than video and print because they can be longer format. We're really seeing our videos and our news stories, you know, people, people are, citizens are reading headlines, you can, you know from your own experience how we, we scan our feeds and we, we pick out a headline and, and we might engage for 30 seconds and then we move on. The research that we have done around podcasting is that they are... The research that we have done around podcasting is that they are a longer format. People tend to listen in a more passive way, which means that the audience isn't, is often doing something else. They're commuting, or they're exercising, or they're eating, or, or doing chores. And they'll pop a podcast on and they will, they will listen. It, it means that the audience doesn't have to find the time to focus all of their attention on the material and, and therefore are prepared to invest more time into, into a full podcast. In a podcast format, listeners are looking for narrative and personality. They're often lighter in tone, a little bit more jovial. It lends, the format lends itself well to exploring the fuller story behind policy intent, behind options weighed, who is involved, who those people are, and a little bit more detail. We see this as a, as a tool that could allow us to show the passion and the commitment of the people behind the policy. Just speaking of retention, I mentioned it earlier, but when people do start a podcast episode, they typically listen to the most, to all or most of it. That is often because they have, you know, started driving or they've gone for, taken their dog for a walk. So they, they tune in for the whole amount. We don't lose them after 30 seconds. And additionally, information is more likely to be recalled if it's presented in an entertaining manner. In terms of reach, the research we have done shows that podcasts are popular among a younger demographic. They're popular among 18 to 34-year-olds, as well as the 35 to 54 demographics. Although interest, they are growing and interest and awareness of podcasting is expanding all the time. Research does show that younger people who listen to podcasts are more likely to be politically involved than their peers. So unfortunately, this is a really great audio slide, audio clip, or a compilation of audio clips that doesn't appear to be playing on this podcast. It plays in my office. And what I might be able to do is email it around to Council afterwards, but we can't get it to play here today, unfortunately. Bonnie had compiled a number of examples that we looked at, so I'll just have to describe them verbally. I won't say. So there are a few municipalities already exploring podcasts as a communication tool. Not many, we found about five across North America. And they, one of them is a small community in Ontario called Saukien Shores. They run a report called The Shore Report, and they have, they've been running it for about two years, and they have over 68 episodes at this point. They seem to do it quite regularly. That one runs out of their Economic Development Department. They have a couple of hosts. It's very informal, very casual. And they bring on a number of different guests around the community. There is another one out of Louisville that we were looking at that is hosted by Mayor Greg Fisher of Louisville, Jefferson County. And that one is much, it's a bit more of a formal approach where he's interviewed by the Communications Director of that organization. And he, he also brings in some different people to interview across the way. And then there is, there is a great one out of Vegas. Now Vegas also has their own television channel, so they're a little bit more of a higher level.
They can aspire.
But lots of great lessons learned in terms of the types of topics that they cover and the tone and manner and those kinds of things. Although they did introduce their team on the first episode, and there were like 12 different people that were working on it. So best practices, great to learn from, and then we'll obviously right-size it for Squamish. But all were really light and conversational and, 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 you know, were able to get into those, that deeper, that deeper level of conversation. So what would a podcast in Squamish look like? We would propose, we've, we've gone around a number of different ideas around hosts. We'd like to propose that it be a District of Squamish staff member who hosts. We have a couple of ideas of people who might be really well-suited, but we would potentially put out an open call to see what level of interest there was and who might be prepared to step up. It would be somebody who would have, you know, a great sort of on-air personality, somebody who was well-informed of, of work that's happening at the council table, and somebody who could, you know, bring a, an air of personality to the, to the podcast. We also thought there could be an opportunity to have a kind of a rotating subject matter expert, another staff member that potentially could bring that level of expertise depending on the topic that we, we provide. The interviewees would be yourselves, and, and then you'd have, depending on the topic, depending on how we chose to kind of match one of you with a particular topic, you would be then interviewed by the host. And we would work ahead of time to develop questions and, and, you know, kind of provide a framework for that conversation. So some of the key elements of a podcast that have been successful are that people like to, and think about any podcast that you've listened to yourself. There's a standardization from podcast to podcast that people find familiar and comforting in terms of whether that's a, and that audio clip provided some examples of the little opening jingles, for example, and the introductions that the, the hosts would make. So that's standard across the board. Signposting is another really important part, and that really, because you're listening passively, you may be doing something else, the signposting really connects you to where you are in that 20-minute podcast to keep your attention focused and so that you don't lose track. So signposting might, you know, introduce an episode or say, "Up next, we have, we're going to be speaking with Counselor Race on, you know, X topic." And then the segments, the attention piece. By breaking a podcast into a number of different segments, it helps us to compartmentalize the content and, and helps listeners maintain the structure as they are listening. So what might our podcast look like? We come up with an opening jingle and introduce the hosts. Signpost number one would introduce the episode topic and what would be covered. We believe that probably three topics would be an appropriate level of content, sort of in a, ending up with a podcast of about 20 to 30 minutes. We'd love to propose that we introduce a couple of regular features. Mayor Elliott had, had, and I had done some brainstorming. One of them that you'll love is called "Council in the Hot Seat", and the idea being that we, again, with the, with the concept of really allowing this type of format to allow the community to get to know you a little bit and kind of move past the very formal, business-like approach and, and have a little bit more fun, showcase your personality, allow citizens to get to know you. So we thought kind of a rapid-fire, 10 questions. It might be what you had for dinner last night, or it might be what your, you know, your, your, your passion around climate change could be. It could be from one extreme to the other. The beautiful thing is with podcasts, we do have the ability to edit. So we can, if we ask 10 questions, we might narrow that down to three or four to just, to just feature in the actual podcast episode. And then the other idea that Mayor Elliott had was potentially tapping into Counselor Anderson's historic knowledge and maybe introduce a Squamish heritage moment in each podcast that was just a short 30-second, "Did you know about something historical in our town?" Maybe, and there are probably countless other ideas that we'd love to hear from you about as well, so. There's no end to the possibilities of topics. Your minds are hopefully already working to that. The most listened-to municipal podcasts we looked at, episode number 68 of The Shores, The Shore Report, interviewed the President and CEO of Bruce Power, which is a significant employer in that region. And that was one of their highest listened-to podcasts. Similarly, the, the Mayor Greg Fisher podcast at the bottom, one of their most listened-to podcasts, was about a new soccer stadium. Other big, other big topics, some were very timely. There was a recreational marijuana discussion in the Vegas podcast, which I'm sure was quite interesting. Got a lot of attention. And, and as I say, capital investments, local developments, or infrastructure projects have been really well listened to. Episodes have included interviews with local stakeholders, business people, and members of council. And from there, that's, that is our research. That is our, our, those are our thoughts around the first item, the podcast. So we'd like to open it up to your ideas and input and, and feedback.
Counselor Stone?
I think it's a really neat idea. I like the outside of the office thinking on it. One of the ideas here after the election campaign, there was the See the Sky podcast series that did interviews of anybody that was running, who was, who was interested to sit down and speak to Marcus. The amount of positive feedback I heard from folks who, that was their primary source of information through the election campaign definitely strikes me as there's quite an appetite out there for this sort of meeting. So I'm intrigued by it for sure.
Counselor Race?
Yeah, thanks. It was neat. I mean, my experience was during the election campaign, and I went through that with Marcus, and he acted away in my dining room table for an hour, and I'm not sure what made it out of the air. And then we had a brief one with him after the election, just the people that were elected, we were all together chatting away with him. But I think it is an interesting way to communicate. And the only, when I was thinking about it, you know, our regime of communication, as you know, is, is the mayor or sometimes the acting mayor speaks for the district and for council. And so I guess we'd have to discipline ourselves and be quite clear what an individual counselor might be able to say in one of these things. Otherwise, people think that that's maybe the district's view when it might be the individual's view. And so there is a little bit of a separation there. We just have to be careful about it, I guess. But apart from that, it's a great idea. I'm not sure about staff putting a counselor on the hot seat. Then we get the chance to put staff on the hot seat. So we'd have to think about that perhaps.
Counselor Herbert?
Thank you. Being a long-formative human, I really appreciate the depth that can go into this. Because, yeah, that's a, you're welcome. And, and, and I think my fellow counselors would say that during the election campaign, that was one of the, I felt more comfortable in that sort of longer, more wholesome discussion than can use some of this complex topic in a sentence, which I was with. You guys have the pleasure of attempting to do throughout your, yeah, your day-to-day. But I, I am curious about how we handle that point that Counselor Race just brought up as far as getting across our personality, our views, and are we, and upcoming topics versus things that we've passed and are in progress, and just sort of how that all sort of interplays. I think it's a future needs to discuss how, how we go about that. Again, I guess it comes down to discipline, sticking to that, or being clear at different times when you're speaking this. Well, I think, but versus, as a council, we have come to the, been voted, we're going to this stuff. So that, that bits, and I find that challenging just in one-to-one conversations I have with people in the community. So when we put that to this larger scale, that's something that I think that, but that's really for us to, to wade through as a council. So, and then just a comment, a question. How, what sort of uptake was it, like how, how many listeners on, it sounds like that smaller place, The Shore, The Shore Report, one might be the most comfortable, is that correct?
Possibly. Through you, Chair, I, it's, it is a smaller community. They had sort of in the range of 200 to 300 listeners per episode. Looking at somebody like the Louisville example, their, their reach was up quite a bit higher to sort of 700 or 800. Vegas, even in and of itself, their, their reach was, at least in the, I guess this was just in the, in the, in the one app we were looking at specifically, but their, their reach was about 500 through 400 to 500. So I think what we need to compare that to is the number of views that we're getting on our videos and, and Facebook posts that go beyond that first sort of 10 seconds. And as a comparison, the Mayor's New Year's message, for example, on, these are YouTube statistics, received 227 views. And then our OCP video from a couple of years ago received 500 views on, on YouTube. I didn't pull the statistics as to where people actually depart, but we know that they generally don't watch the whole thing. So it's a, it's a new way. You know, we're, we're not kidding ourselves that we're going to reach all 20,000 residents. But if we can engage a couple of hundred in a much more meaningful way with a lot more information, we, we believe that that's a good, a good opportunity.
Counselor Anderson, Mayor Elliott, and myself. And Counselor Anderson, I apologize ahead here.
No, no, no. I, my buy-in, I'm, I'm bought in. I like the idea, and I was, I was convinced already in thinking about these, in particular, the recent zoning bylaw review video that was done by the Planning Department featuring Matt Gunn and colleagues in costume, if I'm not mistaken. They were in costume during the OCP review. And I, please, this is a relief that we don't have to, I don't have to get up in costumes. I think that there is, that there is, there should be good receptivity. You partly answered a question I had that you've gone and evaluated how some of the videos for the OCP were received. But there was an earlier program that I think of as well with Shaw Cable. Now Shaw Cable's program in here in Squamish has changed quite a bit since, say, 10, 12 years ago. But there was a, I, I think, a very popular series of interviews with Mayor and Council back 2005 to 2008 era, and they were quite popular, of course. All kinds of media has changed since then. But I see that the potential could be quite similar in terms of, well, popularity. I note, in contrast to the zoning bylaw video featuring Matt Gunn, The Saukien Shores, I had a look at quite a number of these, they are a bit chatty. And I would probably suggest that they could be a little bit tighter than some of the examples that, that you referred us to. And maybe some of the video, I just think the Planning Department's video was, was really good, and there's a good example there for keeping it, keeping it tight. Of course, doesn't need, we don't, we're not after scripting, but there's, the, the examples you've shown us have a good deal of diversity in that regard.
Yes, they did. And there weren't many examples to, to, to pull from, from the municipal industry, I guess. So I think we're, we have an opportunity to create our own style and use the narrative, the, the research that we've learned to really hone in on, on the Squamish style, Squamish approach.
Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. You didn't speak to the frequency, so what, what were you thinking?
So, thank you for that question. Through the chair, so we'd like to get one off the ground as a pilot. We were originally thinking that we could try to do it while Bonnie was still here, but the time is a little bit tight for us to do it this month. So looking ahead to, to build this over the summer and launch something in September, when everyone comes back from the holidays. And, and then a quarterly podcast if it, if it goes well and if we can manage it within our resources, a quarterly podcast. a quarterly podcast, we believe is doable. It would take about an... You know, what we imagine is that there would be sort of a briefing session or a brainstorming session with the counselors that were going to be involved in this particular, the next episode with the host. We would develop a set of questions and kind of do a bit of a, not a run-through, but a conversation ahead of time. We can use a local recording studio in the industrial park. It's very cost-effective. We would spend about an hour at the most recording it. And then there'd be some editing time in our office, which Sandra can do. And so, you know, start to finish, we're not talking dozens of hours, you know, sort of a 10 to 12-hour lift, we would think. So quarterly, we believe is manageable.
I want to thank Bonnie for your work on this project. Since you've done all the research on this, Bonnie, do you think that there's one thing that we should focus on that would really set us apart or help set us up for success? I know there's a number of characteristics that were listed in the slides, but if we wanted to sort of get off on the right foot, is there something in particular that you think that we should focus on?
In terms of topics, I think, honestly, the form is... I mean, choosing topics that are important to people and that they'd be interested in, they'd see the title on ClickPlay, is important, and sort of like keeping on the beat of what it is that people are interested in. But what I think is most important is tailoring how you communicate that information to the format. And what the format lends itself to is giving more of a narrative, personal view of sort of behind policy. So you could choose like a great topic that's like really on the button of what people are interested in, but if it's like half an hour of just stating facts about it, that's not going to be quite so engaging. But if it's talking, if it's giving people information they wouldn't be able to get anywhere else, that's really where the niche is, being able to see, A, that the people who work here are human beings, sort of getting a picture of how many parties are involved, and sort of like the story behind how policy sort of gets made, and sort of like that personal intrigue behind it. I think that's the real niche, and where you grab people, of being able to sort of create a more empathetic connection to how policy gets created, and understanding the decisions that get made, and sort of the tougher things, like the trade-offs that might have been considered, and how many parties, like, consulted. So I think that personal story aspect and how you convey the information is what sets the medium apart, and what really engages people to look for it.
Thank you. That's really helpful, and I love the idea of creating empathy. Because that's sometimes... And we just had some recent letters hit our email boxes, like, you know, blatantly ignoring this. Well, no one blatantly ignored anything, actually, really well-considered. So having that longer time to sort of, to put those considerations in a context, so I appreciate that feedback. And to Counsel Reese's point, I think we should have like a do's and don'ts sort of rule list, so not necessarily in formal terms of reference, but like, don't throw your colleagues under the bus. This isn't your 10 minutes to, you know, promote the Karen Elliott view of the world. So I think there is probably like a do's and don'ts list, and I think the way in which we structure the questions is more about exploring that, the depth of the story behind the policy creation, or the event, or what have you, rather than the decision, or the person's perspective on the decision. I think it's really about helping people see what the ingredients that goes into our decisions, and maybe the things that we are grappling with because we're human beings. And so this is the case, is like, do we anticipate the topic, or do we wait until the decisions may be explored, and which one is more compelling to our audience? I think that's kind of exciting to think about. Thank you for your great work on it.
So I'll take my turn briefly, and then I'll go to Counsel Herbert and Counsel Stone. So when I read this, I think this is quite exciting. Some thoughts I had, just a hobby of mine, is music production, music engineering, so I spend a ton of time on YouTube, mostly listening to videos. But I do watch them, too, and I think when you say podcast, I tend to think anyways audio. But I think there's a lot of benefit to considering video with the expectation that most people will be listening, that there is that video component there. One of the side benefits, technology is getting pretty good. We get automatic closed captioning, so for people with different levels of ability, they can consume that content. In terms of the presenters, my one concern about having a staff member and council members is that it's a bit too insider. And, you know, we have a lot of people, both professional and hobbies, that do podcasts and that kind of thing, and I would really encourage us to consider having a regular staff host with a co-host that maybe rotates and maybe replies, and maybe it's on the co-host to figure out a lot of the questions, and can take some of that workload off. But then, they bring their audience, and it brings, I think, that more public perspective to things. There's more risk for us. We're not in as much control, but I think that would help appeal a bit. It also speaks to, I suspect, you know, greater frequency, we'll build more habit in a bigger audience, and, you know, if we can do it right, with the co-host taking on some of the, maybe, production or preparation, we can achieve that greater frequency. The other thought I have is, you spoke to editing. I would, you know, my expectation wouldn't be high production value, and I wouldn't discount the idea, and I see lots, that stream live, and then the live recording is up, and that brings down the time, and, you know, again, more risk, but a lot more real as well. And I think... Yeah, those are my thoughts. So I will go to Counsel Herbert.
Thank you. My question was, I sort of raised my hand before, we heard the recording studio, and I was just curious about the facilities for that, and if they have the capacity for all those reasons, something to consider for there. And if it's happening, then perhaps it's not that big a deal to... Maybe it's not a huge barrier to add that into one camera, just recording two people talking, regardless of what that is. Plus, it opens up the possibility of costumes.
He didn't hear you. He got ahead of him.
But... And, no, but, and the closed captioning is... It's got, it's huge potential as well. Yeah, and actually, I really liked the points that Counsel Frankel just brought up with the potential of having a co-host, or maybe this is something that, whether it's someone from the university, or someone, you know, it's an opportunity to sort of engage, maybe, potentially with people as well, to see if there's someone from the hospital who wants to come and be a co-host for a portion of that. And I was thinking the frequency, quarterly frequency seems quite low, considering how much stuff we have to cover, but I know that there's a huge... We don't know how long it's going to take to do each one, so the more we do, hopefully we get more efficient at it, and less chatting will be a good time. I'll be good at that.
I forget, my question was on frequency, so we can carry on.
Okay, are there any more comments on this, or questions from staff?
Did we... How much... What is our timing? I do have a few more, a couple more slides on a separate topic, but I wondered if we wanted to drill into any topic brainstorming today, or leave that to us proposing some topics or getting feedback from you separately.
Right, yeah, so I think we're one minute over our schedule, so I guess move on to the rest.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great, so we're excited to get that feedback. So I think let's get a pilot done, and we'll go from there. Great ideas. Okay, so the second, much shorter part of this presentation is another concept called that we're pitching as a council coffee crawl. And this would be to, essentially to replace the mayor's breakfast that had been done with the previous council, and to complement the mayor's drop-in that Mayor Elliott is continuing monthly. So the idea being that in an informal gathering, that we would invite members of the community to meet members of council over a coffee. And it would be a drop-in format, there'd be no RSVP, the logistics essentially wouldn't, you know, we would choose a local coffee house, we would rotate through, and then advertise it through our various communications channels, and just invite the community to come down and meet with you, and have a conversation, ask questions. We have seen it done with the RCMP. They have done a couple of Coffee with a Cop, and it's been well-received. And it has gone a long way to building community relationships and give you an opportunity to meet citizens and your constituents in a more formal setting than just in the grocery store aisle, but a less formal setting than an open house or an information night. There's really no limit to how we could organize this. It could be monthly, it could be every couple of months. We thought that it might work well to pair up and then rotate through that pairing, so that there's a little bit of critical mass with having two of you. It could be, you could each do, if there's six counselors, obviously, you could do three groups of two counselors across three different times of the day, so that you all did it on one day. We have had feedback over the years that some citizens can't make an 11 o'clock weekday morning, so they'd love to see an evening or a later afternoon. So really, the logistics could be any number of combinations, you know, but with enough frequency that we could actually, that it could start to resonate with people and get on people's schedules. With the mayor's drop-in, we have established a regular schedule, a media regular clientele, but people know that it's coming.
It's going to be different every time.
Great, excuse me. People do know that it's coming up, and so when we advertise that it is coming up, we'll see interest gathered, or interest expressed as it goes. So I think having some sense of, some form of frequency and regularity helps to raise the profile of the event in the community. So we'll leave that one open for your discussion.
Counsel?
Counsel Herbert? Yeah, I like this concept, and being able to spread it out over, or being able to run a similar format through the different sort of times of day, whether it's, yeah, at the cafe, or perhaps one of the breweries or something, where there's this sort of clientele at different times, but slightly more formal than just actually being there. So I think it's great, maybe, when we do sort of further those discussions. It's awesome. I do think pairing it up, and potentially, I don't know how anyone would, I don't know how staff plays into that as well, because we... One of the things, I think, even through the earlier discussion of the podcast, is that people don't understand necessarily how much we work with staff to rely on staff for reports and perspective, you know, that actually getting the work done. So having some of that, they won't tell us the bad times, we can sort of work through that, might be something we want to, I don't know. Discuss how we do that, or don't do that, it's fine, but, you know, having some staff would be, would be interesting.
Mayor Elliott?
So one, I think we need a sign at the table that sort of says, "Got a minute, got 10, drop by and have a coffee," because we want to sort of capture those folks that just heard something, or saw something in the paper, and just want to have like a quick question. Like, "Did I see that you made a decision about this?" "No, we haven't made that decision." "Oh, okay, see." Right, like, so that it invites both the sort of flyby questions, but also the "I need to sit down and have a critical talk of this." I, you know, this is very much based, I think, on what you did during the election campaign, which was a coffee crawl. And I know through the mayor's drop-in, the importance of taking notes of the questions you got, and getting people's contact information, because I can't possibly answer the questions that I get. But I think people do appreciate the authentic conversation, and that I'm not deferring to a staff person, like, that I could say, "That's a really good question." Like, "Give me your card," or "Give me your name." And so I think there is definitely a feedback loop, but I also think that helps promote the service culture that we're trying to always have with the district, which is, "Hey, if I can't answer your question now, I'm going to get back to you later." So I think that's part of the process as well. But I think it's a fun way, and also gives all of you a chance to be out in the community. I always get to be. Hopefully, you guys think this is a good idea.
Counsel Anderson?
Counsel Herbert has mentioned the idea of pairing up with staff, and I think that for some occasions, this could be very useful. And I think to our experience with the open house for our strategic plan a couple of months ago, there's a different roles, and interplay, and complementary roles, information values. We want you there, we want you interested. Well, here's how. So for launching initiatives, or reinforcing, promoting participation in initiatives, I think the participation of staff from time to time could be quite useful in these things.
Counsel Stone?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think it is extremely helpful in some circumstances to have staff. I'd be hesitant to bring them to, along to something like Coffee with a Counselor, which is intended to be an effort for us to reach out to the community. I think that there's a differentiation there. I think, as Mayor Elliott mentioned, if you don't have the answer, that's okay, and you can reach back out, you get their contact information, you say, "This is how we go about getting that information." I don't think most of our citizens expect us to have the answers to everything, but as this is an effort to try and get us out into the community more and more approachable with the community, I don't think that's necessarily the place where we want to have staff at the table specifically.
Splendid. You're not the last person I did want to ask.
Never want the last person in this room, just to clarify, that said. Certainly, if there are contexts where council wants staff there for support, we're here to do that. That said, respectfully, I would say that in working with Christina and knowing the objective of this, if my concern would be that people would feel less candid if staff were there, talking about things that they really want to, because they're local officials on, and it may distract from that if staff were there. So if there are different ways we can support councils, provide that information, we're here to do that.
Counsel Reese?
Yeah, I tend to agree with that. I think, you know, I mean, the advantage of having staff there is you can refer all tough questions to them. Off the hook, right? But I think in something like this, the problem is you have a planning staff, for example, and end up with a bunch of budget questions, or something like that, and so it's hard to have one staff person cover a whole bunch of different things, like theoretically, we're supposed to be able to do. So I think this is less formal, and I would just be inclined to just go up there as counselors and do it. And whether, in the format, you know, I'm not too fussed about that, whether it's three groups of two, two groups of three, I know it can be four, but so that's fine. But I think this is another good way of outreach, you know, and there's all kinds of issues. I mean, if we had it a couple of weeks ago, you can imagine the parking lot full of vans. I mean, it would just be one of those days, or evenings, but I think, yeah, that's over. Just go up there and mingle.
So we're 11 minutes over, but Counsel French and myself haven't had a chance to say anything yet, so I'll go to Counsel French and myself, and if it's important, Counsel Herbert as well.
We just said I barfed you.
Thank you. I'll be great, and it is important. I love the idea, and I support it, and look forward to actually rolling it out. And I agree with most of the other comments. I think this is really our opportunity as counselors, without staff, to engage with our constituents. I agree with Counsel Reese in that if we have planning staff along, all the questions we'll get will be budget. So I think it'd be best for us to handle the meetings early, take our notes, and then bring back to staff if there's something we need to... Thank you. For myself, I'm really excited about the idea of me having staff sort of schedule a time, get the booking, and just tell me where I'm going to show up would be incredibly helpful. And with this item and the last one, I'd actually encourage staff to try all kinds of different things, and I'm happy to be a...
I'm happy to be in it, and I'd like to see lots of trial and error and learning.
Councilor Herford?
Just one, let me just spread the point, but the, Mary Elliot's point with having a sign, when I did go through this and I had a little sign on the table, who wants to have money for council, let's talk. But having someone be a bit of a greeter and tell the people around what's happening over here, okay, because you want to get up and greet everyone, "Hey, come sit down and have a coffee." You're talking with people. So operationally, having some, and when we say staff, yes, we could mean having Gary there to answer some questions or whoever, but just having some communication staff or someone to sort of orchestrate some portions of that is great, because you can't, you can only engage with so many people at a certain time. So whether that's hustling up people to talk to or managing the full place and just sort of helping is what I was considering here.
Mary Elliot?
That's a really good point. So when we partner with whatever coffee houses we're going to use or establishments, maybe that can be part of the gig, is that you, we might bring more traffic, so when you sell a coffee, go, "Hey, there's a couple of counselors here, if you want to ask some questions there." My other question is, are we buying a coffee? So do we need a budget line adder? I don't know what Coffee with a Cop, I think they buy the coffee, but I'm not sure. So anyway, we should check on that.
Through the chair. That's a good question. I didn't get that far. So we'll look into how they do it, and my assumption was that people would buy their own coffees, but maybe that wasn't, we hadn't thought that too far ahead.
Coffee with a cop, they buy like a, they buy a jug.
Oh, like a jug, that makes sense. And I think too, you know, we could develop a little sandwich board that goes out of the side of the coffee shop as well, so people know as they're entering that you're in there, and that kind of introduces the concept. I love Councilor Pedigal's guidance in terms of that trial and error piece. Let's get it out there and we'll see what works, and we can adjust as we go. That's the beautiful thing about a tactic like this.
Councilor? We're a couple of customers.
And...
That's how you get people attention.
Hates. I'll send out a little survey.
Superdumb.
Good, who you started?
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Taban.
I'll have Mr. Buckston for a 10-minute discussion on affordable housing.
Sure. He's like nothing more.
In all seriousness, Mr. Buckston, you are determining how long we have to be there in a while.
Sorry?
No pressure.
We stand between them and the lunch.
I'm doing it. So, the housing, affordable housing program policy and progress update, there are some significant milestones, I think, that we've got with respect to policy here. Introductions, Gary Buckston, general manager here, and Devon Cronshaw, who is from McCullough Development Services, who's helped to get us to this point with a lot of the policy, give on all these milestones. So our objective for today, it's ambitious, there's lots of new information for council to see, I realize that. We will get as far as we can with an affordable housing program report, the Housing Strategy and Action Plan, the perpetually affordable housing policy, and then an update at the end on where we're at with the Buckley Affordable Housing Rental Housing Project. Quickly, over the last couple of years, the policy and operations analysis looked at policy options that we needed to consider and options for how the housing organization should be, could be, leading to a final report in March of 2018, which in terms of organizational direction, recommended interim partnerships moving towards a corporation. The motion passed at that time was to continue work on the Contra Hens of Housing Policy and Perpetually Affordable Housing Policy. Those are two of the documents that are in front of council today. Yes, it has taken a little while to get from that point to this. The Buckley project has consumed a lot of the resources over the last year. The last time council dealt with housing would have been December of last year. The motions then were to negotiate a partnering agreement for any affordable housing units dedicated to the district by third parties, essentially amenity contributions, and then a lease with Cedar Sky for the Buckley project and a partnering agreement to assume the Buckley Avenue Affordable Housing Project. Devon is going to cover the Affordable Housing Program Report. I just wanted to note that we had initially intended that this could be a policy. It turned out with the very many moving parts that it has across many departments, that it was going to be very difficult to have one umbrella policy that was able to do that. Hence, we're positioning this report with you that does guide various actions across multiple departments or suggests, so. But it was very difficult to try and get it into a single policy.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, and on that note, I just, I do want to make the note, the point that I'm really excited to be here. It's been a lot of great work, a lot of hard work, not only with Gary and Linda and the community as well. So excited to be here and present on this Affordable Housing Program Report. So it's the culmination of several initiatives undertaken by the district over the last two or so years, which support the provision of a long-term municipal affordable housing program. So these initiatives included, and as shown on the slide, a 2018 Housing Needs Assessment, Squamish Housing Organization Evaluation Report, the Affordable Housing Program Phase One Report, and a few background research documents which have been included as appendices to the final report. So I kind of wanted to just take a really high-level overview of the report and then get into just a little bit more detail of the different components. And then I think Gary's going to speak to a little bit more like the strategy that's been built out on that, and a little bit of an update of some of the policies, where those are at and where they're going. So from a high level, the final report includes a number of policy recommendations that will be actioned by the district across various timelines, and like I said, will be built on in more detail. But from a high level, the goal of the final report is to provide an in-depth analysis of the three pillars of the Affordable Housing Program. So those three pillars are the Squamish Housing Organization, the Comprehensive Affordability Policies, or CAH, policies, and Perpetually Affordable Housing Policies, or PAH, policies. So further, the final report identifies how these pillars will work together in the district to incentivize housing that is affordable in perpetuity and is sustainably managed. So on that note, an implementation strategy has also been proposed and included in the final report and is shown on the screen. Again, it's just a high-level overview, we'll get into a little bit more details of each component. The program implementation includes a rollout strategy for the three pillars that I've identified and is divided into three phases. So those are existing work of the district, implementation priorities for the district, and future needs. So the program implementation is based on perceived effectiveness and ability to incentivize and retain affordable units in the district. So first, I just wanted to give a brief outline of sort of the outcomes or the summary of the Housing Needs Assessment from 2018, which set the stage for the Affordable Housing Program as a response to the determined housing needs in the community. So the term "housing continuum," and a graphic of which is shown on screen, refers to the range of housing options generally available within a community. So these include three primary categories shown in Figure Two up there. First is non-market temporary housing, so that includes emergency shelters and transitional housing intended for tenants to live temporarily while making transition to more permanent housing. Non-market permanent housing, which refers to more permanent supportive housing for vulnerable populations, often for seniors and folks who are with mental illness. And market or permanent housing, which includes a market rental and homeownership components of the continuum. So also contained, I'm trying not to get into too much detail here, but also contained in the housing continuum are economic indicators, such as core housing need and missing middle housing, which provide a more holistic understanding of the housing situation in a community. So through the completion of the Housing Needs Assessment, it was identified that the Affordable Housing Program will focus on four key areas of the housing continuum, and those include independent social housing, affordable rental housing, market rental housing, and affordable homeownership, as highlighted in Figure Three. The Housing Needs Assessment Report also made very clear that supply along the entire continuum was needed to better allow for transition between housing forms as needed within the community. So included here is just an alternative visualization of the recommended focus of the Affordable Housing Program. So in looking at this pie here, we're really focused on that subsidized rental housing component sort of on the right, and truthfully, actually, that should be shifted a little bit. So it deals with the subsidized rental housing all the way to part of the homeownership housing component. So just so we're clear, it doesn't really actually encapsulate the long-term supportive housing piece, it should be shifted down just a little bit. So the Affordable Housing Program Report as a response to these needs that we've determined. So the intent of the Affordable Housing Program is to provide clarity for the district, for community members, developers, and nonprofit housing and service providers of policy direction and expectations for the planning and delivery of affordable housing. So it consists again of the three pillars identified previously, and I'll sort of go into a little bit more detail of each one. So the first pillar is the Squamish Housing Organization. So the information contained in the final report echoes the prior recommendations from my, mine and Gary's previous presentation in 2018, as you may recall. So the purpose of the Squamish Housing Organization is to provide housing solutions that directly support low to moderate households within the district, within the community. So the Squamish Housing Organizational Evaluation Report, again, which I was here previously to present on, provided a comprehensive evaluation and outlined a recommended organizational approach and implementation strategy for the housing organization. So the district chose to take a blended approach for the operations, which involved engaging an existing nonprofit society to manage units in the short term, so it's a one, five years, and transitioning into a housing corporation in the long term.
Can we go back?
Yep.
So that line, negotiating a partnering agreement with Cedar Sky Community Services, is just for Buckley Avenue? It's not for the housing corporation?
It's actually, there are two partnerships, one is for Buckley, one is for the NECXE.
Right, but this isn't connected to our strategic plan goal?
Correct. No, it's not, we're not negotiating with Cedar Sky over the corporation.
Right, yeah, our goal is establishing an affordable housing governance structure in 2019 that will facilitate growth and management of affordable housing stock. Cedar Sky pieces more the short term, in my mind.
Yes, sorry, and that's my fault for putting that there. It should be up in the short term piece, those last two points.
Okay.
So on this point though, I had in the report, on page 12 of the report, 1226, or in our agenda, page 26 of 528, under Squamish Housing Organization, says the district may decide to follow either a concurrent organizational development or a phased organizational development implementation strategy. I read that paragraph about four times and I couldn't see the difference between the two of them.
Sure.
Could you?
Yeah, definitely. So the, I guess the dichotomy between those two options are, the concurrent option would mean working towards, and it is, you know, I think it's going to be quite a bit of work, towards the incorporation of the housing corporation, like in the short term, so sort of in a one to five-year period, so concurrently to the short term. And if we go back just sort of one slide, to the short-term partnering agreement or agreements with respect to the management and operations of the affordable housing units, alternatively, phased, being completely separate. So within the one to five-year periods, solely focused on sort of that short-term goal in the partnering agreement, and then a more of a like, you know, split and then focusing on that long-term housing corporation development. Does that make sense?
I get it. No, I get it, thank you. Does it relate to this plan or have discussion on this?
Yeah, just quickly on this one. Yeah, I think I was having a hard time reconciling the 60-year term on the Buckley and this sort of shift, and I was wondering if that was something that was part of the language of that, of that contract, or how, how does that play with what we're talking about here? Because there's quite a number of units there.
And I can't speak specifically to that, but...
A 60-year lease?
That's separate from the, that's...
Yeah, well, we own the land, so we need to lease the land with a sufficient life cycle on that lease that it's, they can mortgage it. So it needs to be a very long-term instrument, hence a 60-year. That lease still in draft form, we haven't executed it yet, but it is a long-term 60-year life, if there is.
Right, so shifting focus to the Comprehensive Affordable Housing Pillar. So the purpose of the Comprehensive Affordability Housing, or CAH, pillar is to encourage and facilitate the creation of affordable housing units in the district. So the goals outlined above, the four goals, reflect this purpose. To support the CAH vision and the goals, 15 policy tools were identified and have been brought forward, which support the goals of the CAH pillar, and are categorized as either non-development tools, so these are tools that don't relate specifically to planning and development applications, and development tools, so the opposite, the ones that do relate specifically to planning applications. So in line with the implementation strategy, it is important to note that the CAH policy tools outlined consist of policy tools that are already exist in the district, are in progress, or being prioritized, or remain for future considerations. And I'll pass it over to Gary just to give a little bit of an update of where those are at.
Just in terms of where we're at with a number of those residential rental zoning, that's on council's active docket, that's coming back very shortly. Tenant relocation, protection of housing stock, will be something we need to pick up. Covenants are in progress, as are partnerships over at Cedar Sky Helping Hands or the Seniors Home Society, and others that will be addressed as part of the zoning bylaw review. Or finally, with the Stratocomb version moratorium, we have words or we have language in the OCP around that, it would benefit from having further formalized policy on that to guide those issues. So a lot of that work is sort of underway, and it guides where we'll go next, once we've got those initiatives done.
I have a question specific to one of those tools, which is relevant to a conversation we'll be having this afternoon. Tool one, secondary suites. And I'm reading the definition here where it says that through allowing increased density within existing neighborhoods, land already developed becomes available for more affordable forms of housing. And I just, it says that there is a growing thought that part of that affordability spectrum is that secondary suites enable single-family detached homes to become more affordable. And I'm curious, from your perspective and your experience working in this sector, is that typically how it's seen, or is it seen from the more, my more traditional way of looking at it, is that it's providing additional housing? I'm just curious to see what your perspective is on that.
Yeah, it's a great question, and I think there should be, and again, I don't mean to confuse things, this might not be what you mean, but something of a difference is that secondary suite and then also the short-term rentals, right? So those are sort of two different things, and when we're talking about secondary suites and missing middle policies, it's exactly that, allowing increased density in a less intrusive way, something that maybe a single-family homeowner can add a second rental income or rental income to supplement mortgage payments, whatever that is. And I think from my experience, that's definitely 100% a very good way to assist not only the housing, increasing housing stock, but support those who already have a housing stock to better, be in a better position in terms of affordability. And that's where those actually, those economic indicators overlap too, with understanding people that are in core housing need, while they may still have housing, but they're paying way too much for it, right? So layering in those pieces are important. Now, a separate issue is the short-term rentals, and I think that's something that, and I was just speaking with Sarah, I had one of the staff members briefly about some of the discussions that are to come. It still is, like you can kind of see both sides, right? And I think it's the conversation that needs to continue to take place. And on that, I think across the province, municipalities are really grasping with what the effects and impacts of those policies and controlling that stuff actually does, like what may be some unintended consequences, and one of them you're saying is actually folks that maybe are relying on that rental income to afford their single-family home are actually in a little bit more trouble, for example. Yeah, I hope that's your point. Yeah, I hope that's your suggestion. Yeah. Yeah. So, yes, so, and then the final pillar being the perpetually affordable housing pillar. So the purpose of the PAH, perpetually affordable housing pillar, is to ensure that district-managed and/or built affordable housing units are maintained as affordable in perpetuity, to serve the current and future needs of the community or the district. So the PH pillar will achieve five main goals shown up on the, on the screen, and will be detailed in the following slides. So first is the affordability definition. So any definition of affordability needs to start with that CMHC guideline, which states that housing is affordable if it costs no more than 30% of the before-tax income. So when we're, but when we're thinking more specific to the community of Squamish, the income range for determining affordability for PH units, we've determined is capped at the maximum of 80% of the median income for renters in the community. So that's for renters. Now, for units available for sale, the income range is between 80% and 120% of median incomes. So as the slide notes, this allows for affordability to be defined differently when working with other levels of government and funding programs. So it is really important to note that several funding programs available through BC Housing and CMHC do have, are moving towards more of a very prescriptive and mixed income for housing projects. So it's important to have some flexibility in that, but as well establish maximum incomes. And as it notes, this may not actually provide a significant level of affordability. So moving back to when the Housing Needs Assessment really focusing on those four pieces, a minimum median income requirement has also been established, a 50% of the median income for, for the district, to focus these units on the greatest need in the community, while also maintaining financial self-sufficiency for these projects in the long term. So this, and so the previous slide sort of rolls into the rental limits or price restrictions for, for the PH unit. So sort of that sweet spot, or what the policy is, is hoping to achieve are rental rates needing to be no more than 90% of median rents in the community. And that's for district projects, and then 80% of median rents for private developments. Again, it sort of repeats itself a little bit, allowing for more affordability when cooperating with other levels of government, and also providing minimum occupancy and size standards based on CMHC and BC Housing information. So there's national occupancy standards and BC Housing Design Guidelines that need to be respected. So flexibility, like, there is prescriptiveness in these policies, but also a level of flexibility to ensure that, that the district isn't limited when pursuing these funding opportunities. That's the way to look at it. So eligibility, so eligibility has been defined across four key sort of tenants. One is assets, second employment, third residency, and four, income. Again, they're kind of there, if there's any specific questions, I just don't want to get into too much detail there.
I'm wondering if the requirement for 20 hours of work discriminates against single parents whose daycare costs, if they have a couple of kids, would be higher than actually working? So as long as they're, we're not, it's not employment income, can they use subsidies?
Yeah, so...
To reach that income level, because...
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, so you're saying...
So until the government takes care of daycare costs and makes daycare $10 a day, for a lot of single parents with preschool-aged children, the bill for childcare is more than they can make. So I'd want to make sure that we're putting a gender analysis on these requirements as well, so that they're not discriminating on that front.
That's a great, great point. I will make that note.
And I have, I have a lunch meeting, so my other question is just on page 70 of our 528-page agenda. We talk about criteria, and it talks about it's easier to manage the units where tenants pay their own utilities, but we're still including the utilities as part of that 30% because that's what our housing assessment says, is rent and utilities don't make up more than 30% of their income.
Yeah, and apologies, Gary, I know we went back and forth a bit on that.
We didn't rest on that, yes. I believe they are included now.
So there's a note here that says management where tenants pay their own utilities is simpler. I just want to make sure we're not discounting that from the calculation.
That's in the notes on attachment two, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think right above that is the...
It does say including, and then it says management. So I'm just making sure that we're including it when we're considering who's eligible. We may manage it differently, but...
There's a bit of direction here and a bit of discussion in that same thing. Right above it's rent, including estimated payments, mortgage payments, including strategies and utilities. So, yeah, they are included.
I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that they are included in the calculation, but we may choose to manage it somehow differently.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a question about the requirement for employment to be working in the district. And I appreciate the rationale of we're not here to try and solve some of the housing issues of neighboring communities, but I find this one really challenging in terms of, one, how do we enforce it, and then potentially limiting people's ability to progress in their careers? In terms of just, we know that there's a lack of opportunity here in Squamish, in terms of who would ever work out laterally. And then also, how do we define it? So if I work for a company that is not based in Squamish, but I work from home three days a week, or one or two people in the household works in Vancouver, and the other works in the district, so I'm just curious about the thought process there and how that's actually...
Yeah, and you're, and you're right on in terms of the thought process, like, one of the first things you said about just making sure, or ensuring that Squamish doesn't become like a satellite community, that's one way to put it. But, you know, I think the challenge with, with a program like this is just that, you know, some of the unavoidable, I think, because there's just so much bumps along the road and then actually rolling this stuff out, those are great questions, and those are things that are going to need to be addressed. It's a level of specificity, and I'll make that argument just right now, it's a level of specificity that, that maybe, you're right, wasn't totally captured in the report, but agreed, it needs to just be considered, so, yeah, agreed.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Yeah, the eligibility part of this just made me uneasy as I went, as I went through and I thought, oh, he would somewhere that are going to have to make decisions on in or out, and, and the minimum hours of work in the district, I thought was, was interesting in that scenario where you're working in the district, you apply, you get your, your housing sorted, things are really ticked along for you, and that doesn't feel good, we told that feels good for people. Then they're offered something that's a promotion, is going to advance themselves in their career outside of the district. Like, these, and then all of a sudden, they're jeopardizing their housing by taking this career advancement that may actually help them move through the continuum, and we're putting these awkward things in place. So this is an area that I think requires some more caution discussion and really get into the minutia of that, because we want to sort of, I do this as removing barriers and, and really adding prosperity to people's lives, and I, it, English is me when I see, like, someone being held back from a great opportunity because they're not willing to use their, their house.
Agreed, yep.
So can I suggest then that we kind of parked this, but noted this, and we need to come back and circle back on this one?
I was waiting for general questions.
I have one more piece on this, just to be...
Okay, and then we'll try and get to the presentation, then we'll come back to John.
Yeah, the other part of that was sort of gig economy, there's people that work a couple 60-hour weeks, and nothing for a while, and how that all gets, and all that gets stored, and I seem to see more of that, especially as we roll through our seasonal employment and sometimes shoulder season to shorten people. So it's, it's, yeah, just want to make sure that...
No, these are quick questions, and 100% agree. You know, I think the, the challenge with the PH policy, and of any policy of this nature, is really is balancing that line between too prescriptive, but while, or being prescriptive, but also allowing some flexibility. And I think that's something that, you know, of course, myself and Gary, but even as this continues to get rolled out through, through staff, just these conversations need to continue to happen, and I think they're great that they're being posted right now, so, yeah.
I made some notes, we can, it doesn't surprise me at all that this was going to be a bit of a, bit of a sticking point, but we can't house everyone. We never will, so we're going to need to make some tough decisions about who's in or who's out, and these are the tough decisions. So whether or not these are the right ones, I'm not going to say yes or no, but where people work, how long they've lived here, how much they earn, and how many assets they have, are going to need to be issues that we wrestle with. There are no other easy ways of sorting the many into the few. So whether or not these are right or wrong, we can discuss, but these aren't going away.
And just to rest assured as well, like, these, again, are some of the questions that other municipalities who are going down this road are wrestling with, right? And so, again, totally normal conversations, we'll keep having. Sorry, yeah, and then continuing through the rental limits and price restrictions. So we've made a few assumptions in terms of maximum income requirements and then the minimum income requirements. So these are based on Stats Canada data, and I think that's from the most, yeah, from the most recent census. So we cap the maximum income requirement for two or more persons at that 71,210, and that's 80% of what the median income is for two or more-person households from, from Stats Canada. Same for the maximum income requirement for one person, so that's set at 34,253. And so just in terms of, to give grasp, like, what monthly rent that equates, for the first one, 71,210, that equates to a, a monthly rent of 1,780. And then the second one being for one person, it's an average monthly rent of 856 a month. Again, talking to the minimum income requirements, we set that at 50% of the median household income in, in the district, and that's at 21,408.
Okay, so finally, in terms of the last document, the Housing Strategy and Action Plan is something that staff have been working on, contrary to the policy work. It's really not anything new. It's literally trying to sort of itemize and put into one document the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years, and present current activities in context to the larger picture, and sort of try and reassure council that we have a clue, and that this, that this work is actually being done in a coordinated fashion, and it's not, it's not ad hoc. But we've never actually done this in, in the last four years that I've been here, is to try and sort of comprehensively outline where this is all going. The mission, to create a supply of dwelling units, key, that are isolated from rent or price impacts in the open market, such that we're connecting those rents or prices to local incomes. The objective is simply to increase the supply availability of affordable housing. The target population for our direct actions, that's where we're directly involved in the provision of housing, would be low to moderate income earners. The other parts of the housing spectrum, so on that graphic that was, where the box encompasses part of the spectrum, we're not ignoring the rest of the spectrum. Those we'll deal with through collaboration, which we're already doing, whether it's through the Senior Home Society or under one roof, trying to address those other parts of the spectrum through collaboration. There are the seven, seven strategies, each with their objectives, goals, and tactics, whether it's designing, resourcing that, the housing function, maintaining the existing stock, increasing the supply, coordination and enhancement of all municipal affordable housing policy. That's really where that report that we've just covered comes in. Collaboration with other agencies, agencies in town, monitoring and measurement, where we do need to do some work in terms of picking the metrics we want to follow, and then dealing with facilitation of workforce housing. So once you go to the back of that document, there are a list of particular actions and tactics, with timing with who, to sort of lay out a work plan for this over the next few years. Just in terms of the Buckley Avenue, Buckley Avenue project, we have now morphed that or transferred that, that project to Cedar Sky Community Services. They are now actively managing and coordinating this project. My role and others in the organization is a support function to Cedar Sky. The project manager that we engaged has transferred and they're now contracted with Cedar Sky. They've engaged all of the necessary professional consultants, so geotechnical, electrical, mechanical, architectural, they're all on board now, along with cost consultants. So we're into detailed design on the building. It's still a 76-unit apartment, four, five, five-story, if you include the parquet, rental apartment building. We've got the next round of funding from BC Housing, and proceeding, say, through the detailed design, the development permit application will be coming very shortly. I think that's scheduled for ADP in August, and then council in September, that'll be a form and character development permit application. So we're sort of very quickly now speeding through the detailed design and take this through to construction documents. I've recently updated the district's website, we're still doing that, to keep the community informed of where we're at with that.
I have a specific question to Buckley Avenue. In terms of detailed design, where are the conversations with regards to the youth center in that sort of discussion? Is that still moving forward in parallel?
Yes, the youth hub is, so if you look at the top right-hand elevation, bottom right-hand corner of that, the windows on the ground floor are the youth, the youth hub, the youth center. The floor plan for that has been finalized. What we need to do now, and those discussions will be happening with ours, Ministry of Family and Child Development, CFD, VCH in the school district, around programmatically, how are we going to run that? And that comes with some, we're at the point now where asking people to make commitments. We're going to build it, we need, we're going to be needing a commitment or an MOU that that space will be leased and rented by your organization. So those are, those conversations are ongoing. So, I'll just briefly touch on the engagement regarding, regarding all these documents is really in the inform part of the spectrum. Some of the documents are directing internal policy, some of the, the strategy document is really sort of an outline of what we've been up to and where we're going. It really isn't anything new. So we're on the inform part of the spectrum. The PAH policy, we will need to get out to the development community, because if you're looking to dedicate CAC units, you're going to need to understand how that's working and the expectations there. And I am working with, with the Center for Sustainability, on a possible workshop program to move some of these out into the community. Nothing is firm there, that's still a working process. The recommendations, prior to having taken questions, and I assume there are going to be a few, are that we accept the Affordable Housing Program report, accept the Housing Strategy and Action Plan, and improve the policy. One, two, you may have a few questions, I suspect.
So I will put a question, but can you just put the recommendations back on the slides? We have some lines, so I have Counsel Anderson and then Counsel Reese for questions.
Thank you. Gary, you, you, a couple of times apologized for not being where you want to be in terms of a comprehensive policy, but I think we have a lot here, and I think I'm looking to compare where we were with the housing strategic framework of a few years ago, and this report, we're light years ahead. I'm comparing the, the policy tools matrix with something similar that was produced earlier. However, there's two things that are missing this time, and I just mentioned them, not as biggies, but they were certainly well discussed by the Housing Options Group, which produced with CMHC money's, that strategic framework a few years ago, 2013. And that is innovation. And what I'm referring to is pilot projects, research and development, of course, housing agencies like BC Housing and CMHC have whole programs devoted to that. And we thought at that time, I was a member of that group, that this had a place. And our group did include representatives from the realty community, construction, and developers, and they were, that was there, something that they observed readily, is their receptivity to undertaking pilot projects and looking at construction methods and industrialized housing. We, in fact, have in, in our economic development strategy, we have highlighted, I'm going to use this phrase, but that's in fact what it is, industrialized housing. We have a cluster of companies that are busy doing this, testing new ways and pioneering new ways to produce cheaper housing. That's the business they're in. So that, a place that this might have fit in, is you have a page in the report called indirect action, and there's a list of initiatives that like qualifies that as supporting initiatives. And I would suggest, well, I'm not going to be a stickler on this, I'm going to move, or support the recommendation as is, but there is, there, we found a place to include innovation, pilot projects in our earlier report, and that may have been a place to slip it in. There's a list there of initiatives, and, and it is... There's a list there of initiatives, and it is kind of indirect, you're supporting another wealth economic development, but there's a lot to be looked. In other countries, I have news feeds every day on industrialized housing, and in a number of countries, Britain, Scandinavia, Japan, seventy-five percent of homes are produced in factories today. And that's to deal with housing affordability. So this is a whole area, category, that's a little bit peripheral, but still might be mentioned. Another one is-
So councillor, just trying to do-
Sure, yes.
Be a little flexible. Do you have questions at this point?
I do. Another one is advocacy. I see it only mentioned once, and I wondered whether the earlier report highlighted that as a role of local government. So we don't have any reference to federal and provincial and advocating politically. A question, thank you, and I won't take you up here, but I'm wondering where we're at, Gary, in monitoring and metrics. I see that there's a reference on page twenty-one of twenty-six of the plan, monitoring as a future need, that's how it's listed. Where are we at now in monitoring prices trends in the market? I had another question, but I'll just leave it at that for now.
Not very far, that's probably where I need to do the most work, is the simple answer. I don't think we've even selected the benchmarks that we'd like to measure against, so lots of work to do there.
It's a theme that will come up later for us today when we're discussing STRs as well, metrics, it should come up. My final question for now is the, on page fifteen, there's a reference to formalizing a charter or set of principles, understandings for the Squamish Integrated Housing Solutions Group. Where are we at on that? That is when, it says here, second quarter of this year. Does that group, where are they at in formalizing those set principles or charter?
We still meet monthly, so we're still actively, very actively engaged. They've all actually seen these documents, so they all understand where we're coming from. That, in terms of moving that forward, is really a resource issue, because we're all doing this off the side of our desks, so trying to find the time to engage a meeting subject like that has been tricky. So I have been, I have had some discussions with the executive director at Cedar Sky about this very issue, but it's really, we need some resources to be able to move the dial on that.
Thank you.
Councillor Race?
Thank you. Back to my first question, which is the concurrent organizational development or phased organizational development. When we're talking about a housing corporation, I didn't see that decided anywhere in the report, I might have missed it, or recommendation one way or the other, does staff or do you have a viewpoint on which way we go? And the second part of that is, is there a threshold or a ballpark where we get a certain number of units under management? Because we have these units in the pipeline, a lot of them, that aren't built yet, and so hopefully that number's going to increase, the submarket units I'm talking about. And where is the sort of the tipping point, where you start to hand it over, the critical mass, to hand it over to a housing corporation?
Yeah, and first, your first question, maybe Gary can- Sorry, what was the first question?
Well, it's which way we go.
It was concurrent, right, yeah, and I think maybe to that point of just in terms of resources and understanding concurrently, is there, I guess, an ability to have those discussions? You're right, there was no recommendation in the report, and I don't mean to defer appropriately, but I'd probably defer to Gary.
It's going to be the phased approach, based simply on timing of the resources. Right now, Cedar Sky have been consumed with sort of getting their feet under them to manage the Buckley project, which is a bit of a surprise for them. Then I got to negotiate the partnering, both the operating agreement, the operating agreement agreed between B.C. Housing, the lease with them, and the operating agreement for the CAC units, so between Buckley, the lease and the operating agreement for the CAC units. Neither the district nor Cedar Sky is going to move the dial on anything else this year, so it's a phased by default.
Well, I was just going, do we have any idea when we might get to the point of wanting a housing corporation?
Devon couldn't perhaps correct me, but to me, it's sort of, what my general understanding is, you've got to have a minimum of a hundred and fifty units before you-
Yeah, so, yeah, so McCullough Housing Society, of course, is our parent organization of McCullough Development Services, and they operate about sixteen hundred units across the province, so we're fortunate to be able to sort of pick the CEO, Kevin Alpers, brain, and we asked him a couple of very pointed questions that note, and yeah, one fifty to two hundred would probably be in about a range where you'd want to hit to establish some sort of organization to manage those units, of course, as you can obviously tell, the more units the better, but in terms of a minimum, I would say one fifty would be above the minimum, yeah.
Any further questions? I have, oh, councillor-
Thank you. The, having that critical mass of units to manage to make it sort of all work is great. I do see, however, I do see a role that I didn't really see outlined, which kind of, councillor Anderson touched on with the advocacy, it's not always just a political pressure, but to sort of that being proactive and going out and having some, and having some generating capacity to sort of recognize these opportunities and sort of have somewhat sort of that side. And I wonder if that moves that critical mass number down a little bit, so that there's actually some puzzle productivity to reach that threshold, that's part of that that I don't quite.
I mean, Gary's touched on it a few times, it really boils down to resources, right? And the ability to leverage resources and to, again, I'm just saying examples, could be a role to fill or to fit that, right? As Gary said, a lot of this is on the side of folks' desk at the moment, and it's really difficult to really forward those initiatives. So as those units become, you know, the unit count becomes higher, and you're able to leverage revenues that maybe you can get some type of staff person or something like that to really focus their energies on that, I think that's, again, a longer term goal, but that's one way. In terms of a short term strategy, I think that's, again, continued to be conversations that need to be had, so. Councillor Stone?
I think we've gone through this discussion or done this before, but in terms of negotiating the operating agreement for Buckley Avenue and the other units that are coming online through CAC, is there a provision in there that if and when a Squamish housing authority or organization has developed, those units go to that organization, or are you kind of signing off on those and start construction?
No, you're correct. All of those need really good assignability provisions in them for that very reason, because it isn't going to be, what we do now isn't going to be what we need to do in five years' time, so we need to be flexible, we need to be able to move and assign, and that's what the strategy is trying to speak to, and if it hasn't done that, it needs to do that.
It is actually right, under that Squamish housing organization, in terms of talking about the blended option, or blended option approach, units, sorry, industry, the whole thing, this approach would involve engaging an existing nonprofit society to manage units that are being developed in the short term, one to five years, with options for renewal or assignment, yeah, and transition to a housing corporation in the long term.
So I have a quick question, I'm going to shift to hopefully quick comments and then ask for a resolution. The question is, you know, it sounds like from talking real estate agents or just watching the news, that the economy may be shifting. I read that the goal of this is to make sure that there's a portable supply of housing regardless of the economy, but in terms of actually developing the housing we need, would that change the plan if the economy shifts suddenly? Would we, you know, look to adjust our approach at all?
Well, two things, that, and I think that's why the blended approach is so important, right, and then taking the time that, you know, not, so A, it is a point in time policy, or report I should say, but it's been built with that, understanding that in the next one to five years, you know, there should be a better understanding of where maybe that the market is going and all those things, before you sort of jump into that commitment, right? So I think that's definitely one big piece. Gary, I don't know if there's any?
The answer, I would say is yes, we would likely need to shift, because outside of Buckley, the majority of the other units of the CAC contributed units. If those projects don't show up, those affordable units don't show up, so yes, you would need to shift focus between some of the strategies that are in there.
So just my comment, I'll open up to other comments, is in part of discussions, it brought to my attention that Vancouver is setting aside, I believe it's roughly ten percent of their affordable housing made sort of available first to members of Squamish and Swamish Nation and so on, and I think this is something that I would like to see incorporated in some of our criteria. You know, what the exact number for us is, I'm sure will require lots of dialogue, that's something that I personally would like to highlight. Are there any further comments, or I'll see if someone's ready to? Seeing any, is anyone, good, councillor Race, if you'd like to second?
Are you moving all three?
You want them all three, or except to?
All three is fine.
Okay, I guess we can split them if someone has an issue.
I'll start off moving all three.
Okay, someone like to second? Councillor Anderson, councillor Stone, did you want to?
Yeah, so I'm hesitant to move the third one in terms of approval of perpetual affordable housing policy, because I think that there's still ongoing discussion around the eligibility requirements, so I would like to amend councillor Race's and just move the first two, like staff recommendations.
Someone to second that? Motion, okay, any discussion? Yes, please.
I just want to say a huge thanks to staff from McCullough Development Services for all the work that's gone on. I think affordable housing was definitely a huge issue in our community, was a focus of the previous council, is a core focus for us in our strategic plan. It is a multi-faceted, challenging topic, and having these sorts of really strong foundational documents and plans in place put us in a really good position to continue to address the issue, so just a thanks for the work that's been done.
So I think the motion on the floor then is to split the resolutions, so all those in favor of splitting, so doing the first two and then the third one separately. All those in favor, hang on, opposed, motion carries. So any further discussion on the first two motions? Uh, no, that's where we are now, so any discussion? Don't say none, all those in favor of the first two. Anyone opposed, say none, motion carries. So on the third, any discussion?
I would like to amend it to move that the Squamish Council prefer the affordable housing policy back to staff for further consideration of the eligibility requirements.
Second, thank you. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea. I think, speaking of myself, I'm generally aligned with it, but there certainly are some details that I think we want to hash out along that, and that's a, that's one of them, so I think that is the problem.
Any discussion on the amendment? Councillor Stone moved an amendment to the third resolution?
Well, that's the motion.
Oh, so you're moving it as amendment, okay. Moving an amendment, moving it, move it back.
Different wording.
Okay. Any further discussion then on the third resolution proposed by councillor?
Thank you. I'd like to also acknowledge the work that went into this and has been and is ongoing, and it was, it's very comprehensive, and this is the, the eligibility part was the only part that really had me sort of soul searching, so I'm glad that we can break that piece out and come back to it. I know that there's more fulsome guidelines out there, we could really just get into that piece of it, so thank you very much, I look forward to that discussion.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm pleased to support this too, I think councillor Stone's change covers what I was concerned about as well, so I will be supporting this, and I will call a question, all those in favor, on the opposed, motion carries. And, thank you. Yeah, I think we're at, we must be like recess, or recess meeting, and we're back here at quarter after one. So welcome back, everyone, if anyone had a chance to come in and get something to eat. We are now on to SLRD temporary use permit for a work camp in Britannia Beach.
Thank you, Chair, my name is Jonas Valinisius, I'm with the planning department, and today I'm bringing a referral from the Squamish Lillawood Regional District. So from time to time, as the report states, the district gets referrals from, mostly from the Crown on the use of Crown lands, and sometimes from the SLRD on the different development applications or major bylaw updates that are sort of in our neighborhood jurisdiction. So this temporary use permit application came in as one of those referrals. You know, the comments that we make back to the SLRD are for SLRD's consideration, it's not something that's binding, that they have to implement, it's just we're raising the things that we think are important in this application. So the proposal is for a temporary workforce housing complex or work camp. The applicant is Land C Camp Services. The scope of this proposal is to accommodate five hundred workers at any one time, and it's at this point not limited to any major project. So the application does have two letters of support from the two major potential projects in the region, which is Fortis Pipeline and W L N G, but there's no commitment to reserve any accommodation units in this proposal. The application is for a three-year term, and that's the maximum term for a temporary use permit. However, legislation does allow extension of temporary use permits, and the applicants indicated that if it's approved, they would be looking to extend it beyond the three years. So here's just an overview, it's the site that's just south of Britannia Beach, we probably all know it, we pass by it on the highway. It's largely vacant site right now, it's fairly flat, here's a picture of it. Here's this site plan for the complex, so you can see there's some parking in the back, and these are essentially the accommodation units. These wouldn't have any individual facilities, so it's just basically a bathroom and a sleeping quarters, and then everything else would be shared, so there'd be a shared kitchen, laundry, and some recreational facilities. So some of the details of the application, it's a single-story modular buildings transported to the side by the truck, like I said, common facilities, intended to be serviced by bus to the work sites. The water is going to be, is proposed to be supplied by an existing well on-site, as well as storage for a fire suppression system on-site. Sewage would be pumping hall to the Britannia Beach facility. The solid waste in terms of where it's going, it hasn't been identified yet, so we've asked this question, the SLRD staff to look into. The proponents have advised the SLRD, as well as indicated in the public information meeting that was held recently, that this would be booking by project, so like I said, it wouldn't be reserved for any big project, although it could accommodate one, but the proponents seem to be also looking at, you know, any smaller projects, anybody would be interested in reserving spaces here. Fire protection needs to be addressed, they've indicated that they are planning to talk to the Britannia Fire Department and potentially consult with the Squamish Fire Rescue. Well, we, our fire and rescue department hasn't heard about this proposal until we've provided the referral. So some of the concerns that we've identified is the fact that this facility does not seem to be reserved for major projects only. There are no user agreements in place, and at the public information meeting, the proponents were very explicit that they wouldn't be, the two major projects wouldn't be the ones that kind of are the basis for this proposal. The SLRD has specific policy around- The SLRD has specific policy around temporary workforce housing, and it is, it has to be related to a major project. And here at the district staff also are of the opinion that, you know, if those two projects are approved, the facilities such as this would have rationale, because it would limit the impact that those projects would have on the local rental market, specifically on the housing market. But it's not ideal, it's not an ideal facility to service small projects throughout the Sea to Sky. You know, this is, it's a work camp essentially, people would be coming in on a temporary basis, staying there, and then leaving. In terms of solid waste, we need to find out where the applicants are, or whoever their contractor is, where the solid waste is going to be going. In terms of emergency services, we need to ensure that Squamish emergency services are engaged in the approval process if the TUP is issued, so we're talking about the fire and rescue, as well as our emergency services when it comes to, you know, what happens in a major evacuation. We recommend that wildfire hazard should be looked at when reviewing this proposal. And finally, traffic and transportation, the traffic assessment has been done for the proposal. It didn't recommend any major upgrades to the highway, and the consultant thinks that it's, it should be well within the current capacity of the highway, but this project, this report hasn't been approved by the Ministry of Transportation, so we'd like to see that. And then if the proposal does go ahead, staff think that a regular shuttle service should be provided to Squamish, as we're going to be the closest commercial center, and so otherwise people will be driving in their cars. So the SLRD last located at the April 25th committee of the Hall meeting, and passed a motion to do a few things, to wait until the provincial government has provided their decision on whether the existing environmental assessment certificate for double LNG and Fortis BC projects require amendments to incorporate the view of the proposed work camp concept for the project, so whether the environmental assessment should account for this project. I've just talked to staff at the SLRD today, they still have not heard back from the province, they put this question out to the province. That the referral be, or that the referral be sent to the different jurisdictions listed there on the second point, and that the applicant conduct a public information meeting, which they have, and that information is available about the user agreements between the proponent and Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis BC. Well, at the last public information meeting, my understanding is that the applicants were fairly explicit about the fact that it's not necessary for this proposal. That annotation be included in the permit, that renewal of temporary use permit is not guaranteed, and then that the temporary use permit be contingent on finalized user agreement between Land C and Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis, and that those agreements would dictate the maximum capacity of this facility. According to some very basic calculations that SLRD staff have made, it's, the two projects wouldn't necessitate 500 accommodation units essentially. So the SLRD is interested in defining the maximum accommodation based on those agreements. And then finally, further consideration and definition of an amenity package before the permit is brought back to board for consideration. So staff's recommendation in terms of responding to SLRD, we have to respond by June 18th, unless we seek before an extension. That we support the conditions that the SLRD committee of the Hall put forward, specifically the condition for user agreements to be in place, and that the Squamish Luton Regional District consider conditions as part of the TUP in terms of securing the provision of the shuttle service, getting approval of the Ministry of Transportation on the traffic impact assessment, and then engagement with District of Squamish on emergency service provision and solid waste management, and finally, consideration of mitigation of wildfire hazard. And that is it? Thank you.
I'll go to start with questions, I'll go to Councilor Raisin and Mayor Elliott.
Well, it wasn't really a question. I was just going to give you some history of this from the board's perspective, you know, the board's report. So, my perspective of what's happened with the board. And this first came to the board approximately two years ago, as a work camp where businesses would obtain accommodation for employees for a variety of different projects, and it was turned, excuse me, turned down by the board, and the resulting policy came out of that, where it would be tied to a major project. So it's come back to the board in April, as you saw, and there was a discussion, and it was just referred to staff to start drafting the TUP. So the board has not actually seen the terms of the TUP come back from staff yet, but the discussion was around, from my perspective, tying it closer to the Fortis Wood Fiber projects, both in terms of duration and in terms of number. And if, because the workforce for those two projects, if they go ahead, would be changing over the course of the four years, it'd be a gearing up phase and a winding down phase, and capacity could be filled up by other businesses taking it up to those numbers. But, for example, if it was a four-year project to build, it would not necessarily dictate a six-year TUP. So the first term would be three years. At the end of that term, there's a suggestion, a language we put in the TUP to guide the next board on the renewal, that would indicate that it should be tied to the duration of the Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis projects. So that's, which is a little bit different than the materials that are before us in this package. I'll leave it at that.
Mayor Elliott?
One of the things that I am curious about is, and maybe adding this to our agenda, is that the reports refer to shuttling workers somewhere, and I think the assumption is Darryl Bay, but there's no agreement with the district on Darryl Bay yet.
That's right.
So I think that should be one of our pieces of feedback, is that it would be subject to them having a place to shuttle to, if it's anticipated within the district of Squamish. The other one is, that I think hasn't been contemplated yet, is RCMP costs. So overtime for civil disobedience, and potentially responding to that, both at the work camp and wherever they're getting shuttled to. So in conversations with RCMP, I understand that that falls to the local government. If there's?
A cost.
A cost?
Yeah.
And that hasn't been contemplated, I don't think, by the SLRD. If there is civil disobedience, we would be on the hook, RCMP extend down there. And also with that conversation is, with work camps come other bad behaviors. I don't know that you can police everything, but RCMP said to me that often where there are work camps, vulnerable populations are exposed to sexual exploitation, and that there should be a whole prevention campaign before a work camp shows up in the corridor to protect vulnerable populations. And that is also not contemplated by the SLRD, but I think it's important. So those would be some of the things that I would add there.
So if I could clarify, perhaps in our response, we could talk about engagement by the SLRD with RCMP to address these issues?
With?
With the RCMP?
Yeah, I absolutely think so, because I don't think we want to suddenly have hundreds of thousands of dollars of overtime costs over a number of years, because someone put a work camp in the SLRD.
Any other questions? Councilor Storer?
Just curious, you might not know this, but are there, is there a maximum number of TPs that can be issued for a single site?
No, the only restrictions on TPs are that the TUP can only be renewed once. But theoretically and practically, what often happens is, if you change some conditions in a temporary experiment, then it becomes like a new permit.
So I guess I had a few questions. Reading through the report, I see one of the, they attached a few reports, and the one seems to recommend 165 parking spaces, the vast 104. Reading through the different reports at different times about how many workers there would be, the numbers seem to be kind of all over the place. And I attended a presentation in Britannia last week, and the proponent was saying there was interest from North Vancouver and Seashelt and other construction in the lower mainland, and I didn't see it addressed in the report, the additional commuting, especially in the context of our lack of regional transit and those impacts. So how would we address some of those things that I find a bit challenging to analyze these with, what seemed to me to be a lot of conflicting information in the reports submitted to us?
I think these certain sort of items can be put in our response. I was trying to limit response to things that will directly impact the district, and then rely on the regional district to address other issues. You know, something like parking would be certainly within their purview to make sure that there is enough capacity for parking outside, and that, you know, to and from transportation network is, has the capacity to handle it. So we could include it as another item for SLRD to consider.
And just to follow up on that, I mean, I guess my question on parking per cent would be, that presumes a certain number of vehicles, a certain number of traffic, and we're trying to reduce traffic on the highway, and if, you know, to me, a higher number of cars implies a higher number of commuters. And so while the specific parking spots in Britannia might not be our business, I think maybe some of the traffic might be, and so that's why I would more generally be appropriate for us to mention that. Are there any more questions from Councilor? Councilor Storer?
I just some thoughts on that, and I think that the SLRD recommendation to ensure this is tied to specific projects, and getting clarity on what the max number of vehicles requirements are going to be for those projects will help to clarify some of that ambiguity that we're seeing in their current reports. I do find it interesting, I went to their first open house, I think Council Fresh was there as well, and they were very explicit, Lancy was very explicit, that this would not go forward if Wood Fiber did not go forward. It sounds like that messaging has since changed based on the last, whatever, the last week's open house, that they've separated those, that dependency of. So that's interesting to me, but I think that that requirement from the SLRD, that this, it ties specifically to those projects, will help clarify some of those details that we're looking for right now.
Councilor Raisin?
And I agree, and it's an important consideration, because my understanding of the project and the way it was presented to the board, the SLRD, was that you wouldn't have 500 people jumping into cars and hitting the highway every morning at eight o'clock, it was not that kind of an operation. People would come in often from out of town on two-week stints, and they're two weeks in, two weeks out, and when they're here, they might not have a car at all, they would be bussed in the morning to the work site. And so with 500 people, that's give or take 10 buses, so in that scenario, it doesn't raise huge traffic issues. And the highway was designed at that point, according to the presentation, to accommodate significant development in the gravel pit in the future. So for this particular project, there are facilities for it. But I think that's, that's part of the point of tying it to the Wood Fiber Fortis projects, they would be bussing workers there, and so you would not have 50 different people going to 50 different sites around the corridor, 500 different people going to different sites around the corridor and all the traffic that that would generate. So the timing, for me, the timing and the renewal amount, I know we can't dictate the renewal terms, but we put guiding language in the TUP for the first term, the renewal is tied to the expected life after that of the construction project, and by the end of three years, they should have a pretty good idea what that would be. And also the maximum number is tied to those two projects, allowing them to fill up capacity, empty capacity at sort of off-peak times with other local contractors. But there was nothing in the presentation before about Northland, Seashelt, anything like that, it was very much focused on these two projects.
Councilor Storer?
Going back to that concept of tying this specifically to Wood Fiber LNG and to Fortis, it brings me back to the other recommendation that came out of the SLRD about asking the province for clarity around where this standard provides to Wood Fiber's environmental strategy, and if it opens that process back up, I'd like to suggest that we perhaps, the council, contact the environmental impact assessment body as well for that clarification. I know that the SLRD has already done it, but I think in some ways it's important for Squamish council to do that as well, given their ongoing back and forth with the province on this project.
And my own part, I'd also like just to figure out how we can ask them to better clarify what their plans are in analyzing their claims, because one of the reports talks about at the site, which I presume is the staging area, 55 worker cars plus auxiliary bus vehicles, plus buses, and I can't remember, it's like 20 to 40-ish, I might have the numbers been wrong, and I think it said either 70 or 23 boats for people commuting to the site, which I'm surprised, what do they have in mind here? And so it's very hard, I find, to evaluate this in, with the information that's presented. I just, we have about 18 minutes left with this agenda item, and I see some people in the audience. I'd like to invite you to the table or to the podium to speak, but please keep it to five minutes, and if you can identify your name and your address, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to this issue on the agenda today. Tracy Saxby, my address is 1837 Garden Place in Squamish. So as you know, I'm the executive director of Mycet to Sky, and throughout this process, we have been very concerned about the environmental assessment process, and the fact that we're not assessing the cumulative impacts of the Wood Fiber LNG project and the Fortis pipeline. What we're seeing instead, and I just want to highlight how broken the process is, they are not looking at the impacts of fracking in Northeast BC. Wood Fiber is being assessed in isolation, the Fortis pipeline is being assessed in isolation, all of the upgrades that are being made to BC hydro infrastructure are being assessed in isolation, and there's not even any oversight because it's a public utility. And then what's happening with the floating storage units is being assessed separately. What's happening with the LNG tankers that are going to be traversing, how sound is assessed separately, and that's not including the downstream impacts when we actually burn the liquefied natural gas and the climate impacts of that. So what we're seeing with this process is they're trying to now separate out the Land C work camp from being part of the Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis BC projects, and that's a problem for a number of reasons. So essentially, when Lancy came forward two years ago and they were denied a permit, it was because their work camp wasn't tied to a specific project, and the board sent them back and said, well, hey, this needs to be tied to a specific project. So they've come back, and they've now said, but there's, as somebody else noted, there's conflicting statements happening in the reports, and there's conflicting statements happening in the open house that I was present at last week. So in the report that Lancy has submitted, or in the application that they've submitted to the SLRD, they do state that Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis BC are going to be the major tenants. And then there's a report by one of their consultants, at Swift Creek Consulting, who states that Wood Fiber LNG has agreed to rent 75% or occupy 75% of the rooms. So there's conversations going on that are very clear that Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis BC are interested in this work camp, and they are tied to this specific work camp proposal, and thanks to the motion that was passed at the SLRD in April, they are part of this particular proposal, because SLRD does not want to approve a work camp if it's not tied to a major project like Wood Fiber LNG or Fortis BC. So what we're trying to say is, the work camp's not going to go ahead if Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis BC don't go ahead. Like, it is absolutely tied to these two tied to these two projects. However, in the environmental assessment process, both wood fiber LNG and Fortis BC stated that they didn't need a work camp. They also stated that there would be no impact of having 500 temporary workers or 500 construction workers coming to town, that there would be no impact on our housing. And I mean, we've had a housing crisis for five years. So that, that's obviously not true. And it's still not true to this day. We have a housing crisis in Squamish. And a work camp might be necessary, but if it is necessary, then we're asking that it be properly assessed through the environmental assessment process and that an amendment be made so that it can be properly assessed. And we can look at the social and economic and environmental impacts of a work camp in Britannia Beach, because it's not going to affect not only Britannia Beach, but there are going to be flowover effects in Squamish, in Whistler, in Vancouver, adding another 500 people in a, in a small location where they're not going to have any alcohol on site. But then that means there's 500 workers that are going to be going and looking for somewhere to drink. Where do they go? How is that going to affect highway traffic? There's a whole bunch of different social, environmental, and economic impacts that we think need to be assessed properly. And right now, they haven't been assessed at all. And that's a big, that's a grave oversight.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions or comments?
I'm not authorized to speak for wood fiber, of course. It's my understanding they are applying for an amendment to EA certificate for workforce housing. So I think that's a fair thing to add to our points, is we can just confirm that with the EA process I'll expect.
And that's what SLRD has asked the province. And they're expecting to hear a response by mid-June. So within days, I'll find out. Staff seem to think that the positive response is probably going to be, no, that is not part of the process. But we don't know.
Counselor Stone?
So again, I appreciate the SLRD has sought to seek that clarification. I do think it's still important that as council, we continue to push the ordinance on that. And so I'd like to put forward a motion that the District of Squamish write a letter to the Environmental Assessment Office, asking for clarification with regards to wood fiber LNG and Fortis BC's EAs with respect to workforce housing.
Do it a second. May I?
Maybe a friendly amendment?
Please.
I actually think that if we went back in time, workforce housing would have been included in the EA. So I think our request should be that any workforce housing would require, for the benefit of our community, a review to the certificate amendment process.
That's it. Okay. So any discussion on the motion?
Can you look at the motion?
I believe it's...
Will Craig in?
I thought Chris would just go and repeat it.
Please.
That the District of Squamish write a letter to the Environmental Assessment Office requesting clarification on inclusion of workforce housing in the wood fiber LNG and Fortis BC environmental impact assessment.
I'm sure the amendment was to request that we be a review of workforce housing, not just whether or not it's...
What they require is that it is a certificate amendment in the social and economic.
So we're asking for a certificate amendment with the process?
If they decide that they need workforce housing, that we would expect the EAO office, the EAO, to amend their certificates and do the appropriate assessment.
Do you want to try reading that back?
So I got part of it. That District of Squamish write a letter to the Office of Environmental Assessment to consider the announced rules.
So I think it's to consider reopening the certificate, the environmental assessment certificates for wood fiber LNG and Fortis BC, if workforce housing is considered necessary for those projects.
But please, how do you...
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. I'll listen to you and oppose. Any...
I was just wondering if staff could repeat back what they're going to add, like just, because we've got those four bullets, but didn't hear any disagreement with, but what else you heard that you'll be adding to our referral to the SLRD?
Yes. So the additional bullets would be securing an agreement for, for the RCP, but I wonder if we should make that a little more general?
Yes.
In case there is another destination. So securing an agreement for transporting, transportation between the housing facility and the work area, work areas.
Staging site.
Staging site.
I think that's what they look for.
They'll be settled. This is the pipeline and the manager.
Engagement with the RCNP in terms of additional cost and prevention for...
Volatile populations.
Volatile populations. So can I ask for clarification for my colleagues? Are we, and I'm not clear what exactly the TUP contemplates, if, if wood fiber, you know, through having to clarify which specific projects they're associated with and the number associated, that comes to whatever is, do we want to explicitly limit it to those projects? Or do we want them to say, yes, we're explicitly tied to this, we need at least this much, but we want 500, we want 600, and we can fill it however we want? Or is it our expectation that if this goes ahead, it is only used for the Fortis wood fiber project? Counselor?
I would prefer to leave it to the suggestion from Planning Department that these other issues, and there are a number of them, be left to the SLRD and that we really do focus on what is of direct impact for us and how we can cover the District of Squamish.
Counselor Reese?
Yeah. From my perspective, this is tied to the maximum number of workers that would be on those two projects combined, the project and Fortis, and the duration of those two projects. But because it's not a constant, we don't start off with the full number and they want to go to the last day, vacant capacity up to the maximum could be filled with other workers. So I, I don't think it's fair to tell them that they have to have a bunch of empty rooms for perhaps a year in the front, a year in the back. That's not a fair business model. But I think the way this has come to us at the board is that the duration and the maximum number are set by a wood fiber LNG project. And vacancies in that program could be filled through other businesses.
Counselor French?
Yeah. I tend to agree with previous two comments. We have a housing shortage here, and this proposal is an opportunity to address that. And if we were to restrict it to just wood fiber LNG and Fortis BC, that would leave some of the retail outlets that are struggling to keep people here because of housing, and fast food outlets that have also indicated they could make use of this type of accommodation, and an employer like West Coast Belt Buildings, which is having troubles bringing people here because there's nowhere for them to live. It's an opportunity for those types of businesses to address their own employee and housing needs.
Mr. Anderson, do you have a specific response to that?
I do, to some of that Council Reese proposed, I just wanted to highlight that an option is there for the proponent to phase the project so that as the, sort of, if they're scaling up to reach the peak accommodation capacity, you know, they could phase it with starting, not having to put out the whole site right away. I think the issue with allowing other people, other companies, smaller projects to be part of this, is that it's going to be, it's become, it's going to become very difficult for the SLRD to not renew it once these two big projects are over, if there are people already living in there, even on a temporary basis. So just something to consider.
Mayor Elliott?
Yeah. So I agree with Counsel Anderson. We'll let the SLRD manage that. They do have a requirement in their TUP policy that is linked to projects. And let's not forget, this is modular housing. So you build enough to manage the first year and then take some away for the second year and then build it up again to the third year. This is not community housing. This is a dry community with very basic amenities. This is not where you'd want to put your tourism employees or your, your workforce employees. This is not about creating community. This is people coming and going to these at a time. So do we have a workforce housing issue? We certainly do. But we need a Squamish solution for that. And we need to work with tourism and the chamber to do that. So this isn't a solution for that. It can be scaled for these large projects. So I think we allow the S1P to manage that. And then we get busy as a council on our affordable housing strategy that includes workforce housing. So that the people who are working in Squamish businesses are part of our community, which is exactly where we want them to be. So that would be my preference, is that we just allow the S1P to manage this through their TUP requirements in terms of numbers and scaling it up and down.
Okay. So where are we? And I do have a couple of thoughts myself about conditions. Are, are we feeling we're at a place where we can sort of try to come to consensus on conditions and people are otherwise generally okay with this? Or are there additional thoughts?
I'm, I'm good with what Mr. Anderson is responding back with. I don't have anything else to add.
Couple of things, just, I, I am a bit uncomfortable with the direction to engage with our emergency services. I would personally rather us come to some sort of agreement or disagreement, or maybe even an understanding of what the expectation is. And the SLRD may or may not agree with what our thoughts are, but I would be more comfortable having that understanding beforehand, having a better understanding along those lines, a better understanding of the traffic and the parking and all of these things. Where is the staging site that they are basing all of this on? To me, that is a critical piece for understanding whether or not we can support this. So before saying yes or no to the TUP, I would want to understand, you know, what that staging site is and what, you know, how that fits with that. I don't think we can look at that separate from this personally. I think too, in one of the reports, it talked about the workers that would work at the work camp supporting the visitors, we'll call them. And I think it, you know, made a reference to pregnant women or women who's pregnant who were looking for flexibility. And just remind me of the argument a few years ago that Great Wolf Lodge performed with genders. And I still think that was well received. And so, you know, the, some of their assumptions about the availability of workers here, you know, they talk about local workers here, we'll staff the camp to support the workers. At the same time, they're saying there's no, you know, there's already a labor shortage here. And so having an understanding of how they reconcile these things, because I don't want, you know, if those workers, restaurant workers and service workers are going to be working at the camp, that means they're not working our local businesses. And we know our local businesses are already struggling with the workers. So I suppose if this speaks to the Environmental Assessment Office of General Review, but, you know, if people were comfortable adding that to our conditions, I would appreciate that. Beth, Mayor Elliott?
So staff, does it, I mean, the, the thing that's difficult about this application is that it is based in the SLRD. But the staging areas are all proposed within the District of Squamish. The workforce would primarily to staff this camp, as Counsel Pegill says, would come from us. And so their decision has, has, can, and it would impact our, our police force. So is there a, that, is there, can we put sort of a motion forward that they actually need to negotiate their terms with our staff at the table on the things that impact Squamish? How do we capture this in our feedback, that their decision actually affects solid waste, RCNP? And so they can't negotiate this TUP in a vacuum that is just the SLRD. It actually has to involve our staff and potentially another referral from, from this council?
I would suspect that while for sure some of these aspects that would impact Squamish would have to come back to council for approval. So if, you know, if we were to receive solid waste in our landfill, I'm sure that would be an amendment to the contract that we have. I'm not sure about the RCMP services and how that would play out. We can perhaps strengthen the language around engagement to, to, to make sure that, you know, if there are any cost implications, that it comes back to, to this council to approve before the temporary permit is issued.
I'm just, I'm just sensitive to the fact that this isn't an official referral and it's no one behind it.
Yes.
But some of the feedback we've given them, you know, if this goes ahead and suddenly we get a bill for $300,000 worth of RCMP overtime, I want to make sure that kind of stuff is considered and that it is binding. So anyway, I look for some direction on how we sort of address our concerns about making sure the impacts on our district, we actually get a say over if this proceeds.
Would it be possible to sort of outline to the SLRD some of the concerns that have been raised here? And then as a condition, express our desire for more wholesome information on these so we can provide a more informed referral?
Yeah. Perhaps what we could do is for one, ask an extension, or an extension with an undefined term. And the conditions for that essentially would be to engage with staff on the emergency service provision, RCMP.
Solid waste?
Solid waste, all those outstanding things.
Staging areas.
And then we'll, once we're done that, we'll bring it back to council. Issue is it's going to take staff resources to do that engagement.
Which is the argument about why this should be done under the environmental assessment process, so that the socioeconomic and environmental aspects of this aren't being done by local governments, the regional districts, that's a huge download, and are just being done by the Environmental Assessment Office. So this is the very frustrating part about this process, is we're contemplating all these things. And if this was just done properly, it would be done by someone else with our input. So I'll get off my soapbox now.
Counselor Erger? The environmental assessment process and the socioeconomic impact assessment, the rest of these conditions, to me, really hinge from understanding, better understanding that. So anything we can do to get a more fulsome picture before we go into the, to the other finer stick handling of, of this is important to me. So I'd be supportive of anything that clarifies as much of that as we can. And ideally through environmental or, yeah, the, the process is my, is my preference. So if that needs me to, an extension from the June, is it June, the 14th, so makes, then we need to, then I think we should, we should do that.
So would we have the option then of sort of, if the environmental assessment does not do a renewal of this, look with public engagement and so on, that we would expect the proponent to, as we do with other things, I mean, sometimes after some funding from the proponent for staff time, to fund this discussion and fleshing this out so that we can provide an informed opinion. And until that time, we can't support this, you know, until we have that information?
I think that makes sense to ask for an extension, at least until we know whether the province is going to look at it or not. I'm just trying to come up with some suggestions around a motion to that effect. So maybe the thing to do is just to ask for an extension till the end of June. And hopefully by then, there's a responsible in the province. And hopefully by then, there's a responsible province.
And at that point, do we deal with what we want to do next? In terms of asking the proponent to, for us to get the information or just to deliver? And do you, would you communicate with the SLRD why we're asking for an extension? Or do you need a motion to that, or you just need a motion to ask for an extension?
I think we could include it in the motion to make sure that it's clear to the board. We'll communicate with staff.
Okay, so, Senator Harker?
So if the resolution that everyone has resolved, that pending clarification of several questions, the district is asking for an extension until the end of June?
Can you ask me more? Clear.
Yeah, I was going to say that the, that, that we have an expectation that there's environmental assessment process to be followed here. And we'd like to see the outcome of that before we comment further on it. And then put the, tie the extension, tie the extension we're asking for to the action we're expecting to be have taken.
So to request a delay until we have a response from the Environmental Assessment Office about whether or not they will reopen the process?
I'd rather word it, word it more expectant, that they are going to reopen the process.
So resolve that we request an extension, expecting a review from the Environmental Assessment Office?
One second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So now we're on to residential rental tenure on prior notice. Mr. Daley?
So I may excuse myself for this topic. One of the, the properties being considered under this residential rental tenure is a place of my business. So I may excuse myself and leave this to you five folks to correct this all. I will be in IT getting smaller issues started out because of your 45 minutes and your agenda so far, and needed in that time.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Right on. Good afternoon, Chair Mayor and Council. My name is Jessie Fletcher. I'm planner with Community Planning and Infrastructure. And with me today is Brian Daley, our Development and Subdivision Coordinator. We're here today to seek feedback on the proposed residential rental tenure zoning and OCP amendments prior to bringing them forward to council for readings. So municipalities were given the authority to zone for rental tenure in May of 2018. The legislation provides local government with greater ability to preserve and increase the supply of rental housing in their communities. Staff introduced this ability to council and council-directed staff to develop a rental tenure zoning amendment outside of the comprehensive zoning file update. Council-directed staff to only apply the rental tenure zoning to existing rental units to preserve the existing rental stock. Today's staff representing the draft bylaw for committee feedback. So staff are proposing to implement residential rental tenure zoning on 12 properties. These 12 properties contain 309 existing non-stratified purpose-built rental suites. Staff have engaged with the owners of rental buildings prior to crafting these amendments by way of telephone conversation and email correspondence. Staff have also reviewed work done in other municipalities to introduce rental tenure zoning. To date, only New Westminster has introduced rental tenure zoning on specific properties.
The amendments would limit the form of tenure on affected properties to residential rental for the existing number of purpose-built rental units on the subject properties. Owners of these units and buildings would not be permitted to occupy their units. The only permitted form of tenure would be rental. The benefit to these amendments is that in a redevelopment scenario, an effective property owner would need to provide the same number of rental units that currently exist on site, but may be permitted to develop additional for-sale units that may be owner-occupied. To address council feedback, an average unit size of 76.18 square meters or 820 square feet has been established, which would apply in redevelopment. This number would provide flexibility for the developer to provide a range of unit sizes and types, provided, provided the unit sizes average out to the minimum size. The number was based on national rental data showing the average size of one, two, and three-bedroom rental units. The approach of applying residential rental tenure zoning to existing purpose-built rental buildings would have the additional benefit of establishing a definition and a standard regulation of residential rental tenure, which then could be applied in future, in the future to any proposed purpose-built rental development. As part of applying residential rental tenure zoning, staff have drafted accompanying official community plan policy to recognize the impact on development potential for affected landowners. Policies are to be included in Section 12 Diverse and Affordable Housing that both supports consideration of increased density for sites that have rental tenure zoning and that reinforces the desire to retain the number and size of rental units in redevelopment. Research undertaken to date has not identified a similar, a similar authority regarding rental tenure zoning elsewhere in North America. Only one municipality in British Columbia, the city of New Westminster, has implemented rental tenure zoning on specific properties, and that bylaw is being challenged in the B.C. Supreme Court. Bylaw is being challenged on the basis of procedural error and erroneous information that was included in the public hearing notification. A decision by the Supreme Court has not been made on this matter at the time that this report was written. New Westminster has brought forward another bylaw amendment to implement residential tenure on the same properties and hold another public hearing. This will ensure the intent of the original bylaw is upheld in the event that the bylaw that is being challenged is quashed in the Supreme Court. There is no other existing case law regarding residential rental tenure zoning. Staff recommend that, staff recommend that council-directed staff to prepare zoning bylaw and official community plan amendments which introduce residential rental tenure zoning based on feedback received at this afternoon's meeting. Thank you.
So questions, Council? Senator Harker?
I did a little bit of research on this, and at some point, there was some discussion that Burnaby had implemented this, but I'm wondering if anybody knows what happened to that?
Go ahead.
Well, Burnaby defined residential rental tenure zoning a while ago, and it was kind of being heralded as the first people to implement it. But it hasn't been implemented on specific properties yet. It has been included in some of their multifamily zones. But my understanding is they have a program that they've developed that they're going to kind of implement further, but it hasn't been actually implemented on specific properties yet.
Mayor Elliott?
So Burnaby announced on May 28th that they are moving forward on this. So they approved a strategy on rental-only zoning. It's one-to-one rental replacement. And of those replacement apartments, they have to be 20% below the market rental rate. So it's a one-to-one replacement, and they have to be below market in that replacement. 20% of new units are rental in all new builds. That's another part of it. Adding rental to commercial zones and a density offset to build more, higher density because you have rentals on you. And then vacancy rental controls. And then some more things around protecting system rentals. So they've, that was like last week, and it was a whole suite of things. So they're in the process of implementing this. But I thought the idea of actually the replacements being more affordable was actually a pretty good idea.
Senator Harker? It would have to be tied somehow to bonus density because the legislation on itself does not allow control of rents. So the only other way then would be to also offer density bonus as a, as a condition.
The legislation doesn't allow it, but can we include some of the wording in some of the policy direction?
Yeah, we could include it. We're amending the OCP to recognize these properties. We could include, like, around increased density, subject to affordable rents.
Just wondering if someone can clarify for me, and I apologize, I realize it was in our package just with everything that's all out of my head. The issue with stratified units and why we can't or wouldn't pursue some of this for places that are stratified? If they're being used as rental for the foreseeable future?
Well, it would be challenging to enforce that. So in, in units that are already stratified, they may currently be owned by one owner, but should they, at the time that a new building is constructed, it can be stratified without going through municipal, either council or approving officer approval. So it would be kind of challenging to ensure that the owners weren't actually occupying those units. If, if a redevelopment scenario comes through where they're seeking a higher density or something like that, and there's, there's an opportunity to achieve a housing agreement, you could limit the stratification of those individual, of those rental units into individual stratified lots. So that would, they would have one owner, which would be an easier way to ensure that they wouldn't be occupied by the owner. But it would be sort of challenging to ensure that the owners were not occupying individual stratified units.
And aside from that, though, there's a general feeling that if a building or a unit is currently being used for rental, it's, it's not a sort of an unfair burden to put the zoning on a property? Is that the basic logic?
If I may, well, when we proposed the changes, we recommended that we don't include stratified units or some of the, what appears to be a purpose-built rental building might not be that at all. It's just the owner decided that they're going to rent, rent it. In some cases, there were housing agreements that, you know, the owners had assigned to based on a limited term. So at some point, we've entered, the district entered into agreement with the owner to say that these are going to be rental units for so long, and then after that, they're going to become market units. So just to honor those agreements and the intent of those developments, we propose to only go with this zoning only applied to projects that were purposely built as rental units, meaning that they weren't stratified.
Do we have agreements with some builders that are currently renting?
One that we do have is Riverstones. There's both units owned by B.C. Housing, which we have an agreement with, and then units privately owned. And both of those, I believe, have a housing agreement that expires eventually.
So in our discussion that we had a few weeks ago about this, we were talking about, you know, these buildings that we proposed as zoning on an existing building, and then the owner wants to redevelop that building, that we would get in the new building, the same number of rentals of approximately the same size. And we can't control the price, I take it, because of the legislation, what the new rents might be. We can control the size and the balance of the building. We could allow it to be stratified and sold at market because these things have to make financial sense, of course. Otherwise, they're not going to get built at all. So I think we want to preserve that part. But then the other thing is if we do want to control to some extent the price of the rents, the equivalent number of existing units by some formula, then the way to do that is by negotiation through density bonus. And the bylaw and the policy would contemplate that? Or is that something we just leave out of the bylaw and have it as a policy? And so we start a negotiation, and they may or may not want to take us up on that?
It could be done both ways. It could be just a standalone policy in the official community plan to indicate to those owners that if, you know, there is supporting policy, if you do apply for a higher density to rezone, and here's, here are the conditions under which it would be supportable, meaning affordable rental rates. Another option would be to ride it directly into those zones. The issue would be, you know, we're, we wouldn't be looking at side-by-side basis and sort of figuring it out what each side can carry. But we could do it, write a density bonus right into the zone and just require a housing agreement as a condition.
Can you clarify for me? It wasn't entirely from the bylaw as written. What tools we have or what are, what is mandated by the bylaw in terms of long-term rental availability? So, you know, and what do we mean? So has to be at least 90-day rentals? Or what's the standard? What's the, what are the enforcement tools around that?
So are we, we're talking about the use of the dwelling units essentially then?
Yes, we have a residential rental zone, residential rental tenure. I think our intention is to create long-term rental. So, you know, what tools do we have in the bylaw to ensure that? And what do we mean in this context when we say long-term? Or when we're thinking long-term?
The definition speaks to, means the form of tenure known as tenancy in which rent is paid by a tenancy landlord in exchange for the right to occupy a dwelling unit for residential use in accordance with the provisions of the Residential Tenancy Act. So that is to ensure that you're assigned into a long-term lease of at least, or typically a year, I believe, is the Residential Tenancy Act. But that, that piece is calling out specifically that separate legislation that is governed by the province to ensure that it is for an actual long-term rental use.
And then enforce the compliance of that provincial legislation? Would that enforcement go to us, or it would be up to the province to enforce that, compliance with that piece? And so it would be up to the province to enforce the long terms or the short terms?
It, it would be up to us to enforce, to make sure that it is being rented to, in accordance with the Residential Tenancy Act. Obviously, if there is other issues in the Residential Tenancy Act that were being, that weren't being upheld, then potentially that would be up to the province, but it would be for us to ensure that it is being rented and not owner-occupied.
Mayor Elliott?
So I know we're applying this to buildings that are currently rental-only. But what about applying it to buildings where we've secured rental housing? Is that included in this bylaw? So where we have a covenant on rental housing? So at least we, you know, if that building ever changes, we've at least protected what's there. So if we've got 18 units, those, because this legislation does allow us to do it on a per-unit or per-floor or per-square-footage basis. So we've got a number of buildings where we've secured rental housing. And why wouldn't we now say, well, you've already agreed to that, you're building, you're building, your whole pro forma is based on that. So now we're going to stick this zoning on those 10 units you gave us. So if this, this land ever redevelops, we already have that secured.
We could. We decided because some of the covenants and housing agreements we negotiated with had specific terms in some of them, there was a period in time when we started entering into these housing agreements, there was an end date. And I think historically, that's basically been the practice. And I think, you know, that is an agreement that we entered to, into. And we, if we now applied residential rental zoning indefinitely, then that would essentially make that part of the agreement nonvoid. So it was just to respect the agreements that we entered into. Some agreements are in perpetuity, and so those housing units will be, are secure in perpetuity. So we didn't see the need in those cases, but we also didn't want to upset the agreements that we have that have limited terms.
So those terms are usually 60 years?
They range. Some are much shorter than that. Some of the historical agreements we have, I think, are, but it's maybe 30 years. Some are 60, there's a few that are 60. And then all the recent ones that we've been doing are indefinite.
I still think it's something to consider because we're applying it to the land, this zoning, not to specific agreements. And it is one way for our, for us to get this sort of perpetual, sort of, that's the word I look for. Stock of rental housing would be to, to look at sort of securing those units that already exist through covenants by putting it on the land. And ownership changes in 30 years from now is a long time. And ownership changes, and 30 years from now is a long time, and, you know, would there be a lot of pushback?
Yeah, I'm not sure it makes any difference, respect, because I think the enforcement tool, if the housing agreement was breached versus if the zoning was breached, is more or less the same thing. I think you're looking at injunction anyway, either way. And we always have discretion to change zoning. We wouldn't necessarily unilaterally have discretion to change a housing agreement, because there's two parties to that agreement. So, I would prefer just to leave those as is, and apart from the administrative task of going around and assembling them off the bylaw, I would just worry about the ones that are the specific rental ones that are identified, and the next development that comes along, and do it that way.
I would suggest that if we, if that is something that we're interested in, that that might be something that we do in the future. This is sort of our first step into rental zoning. And I think that there would be more pushback from the owners that have entered into these specific agreements, rather than, you know, properties that have been sort of non-stratified, they can only be rental at this point. So, maybe this could be a good future step, sort of start a bit softer, and then continue expanding the program.
Just for clarity, those rental suites that have housing agreements on them, are they also protected in the zoning, or just protected through the housing agreement?
There's both. Some are only in the housing agreement, some are given as a result of the density bonus in the zone, like the mud mixed with this one has a density bonus in the zone. So, that zone essentially protects the housing agreement, and if you wanted to rebuild something, again, you'd have to do that, yeah.
So, this is the piece about trying to protect all of those rentals, because some of them aren't protected in the zoning. And this gives us a tool to just take a few suites and say, at least that much. So, we're not saying, oh, we've taken over your whole piece of land and said this would be rental. We're just saying, the 10 you gave us now are the 10 we'll keep, thanks very much for the rest of time. And then, future councils, if they, at the end of life of that building, and they rezone it to something else, that's a starting point, but we should have got 10 there. That was my point.
I mean, I'm not so concerned about those smaller ones. I think those could be easier. I am more concerned about the big projects that all have, you know, all of the units are rental at this point, that would, you know, would probably be quite opposed to a change in zone.
But they're already zoned for rentals?
Well, on a limited basis.
Can you give me an example? Maybe I'm just not understanding.
So, the Riverstones has, they're all rental units right now, and we have an agreement with BC Housing that expires, and we have an agreement with a private owner as well that expires. But they're all, all of the units are rental. So, if we were to go in and put rental zoning on all of the rental units, I think that that could be challenging.
I appreciate where Mayor Elliott's coming from. I would like to see what that list looks like, because I feel like they're having a hard time understanding what the full picture is that we're talking about in those specific units. I think the intention here is to start to protect our rental housing. The legislation also gives broader powers with regards to designating whole areas as residential rental tenure in an effort to try and actually reduce land values and make building of residential housing more portable. So, I think the powers are broad under the legislation, if you want to apply them that way. And I think I'm happy to start taking our chosen with this first effort, and I think that in a second phase of it, I'd like to see that list of where other existing residential rental spaces are, what their current, whether it's under a housing agreement, or if there's zoning tied to it, and which ones are at risk of potentially being lost after a housing agreement is over.
Mr. Doniskas, when you say or suggest that what Mayor Elliott is asking about would be challenging, do you mean from a staff workload point of view? Or is that, you know, a legal opinion that we would see a legal challenge that we would lose, or do you mean that challenging?
We don't have a legal opinion at this point about it. Definitely would have staff resourcing implications, because now we're expanding the project, so that means that other things that would be lined up would have to, you know, would have to shuffle that. I'm just expecting from the perspective of the, you know, the fact that the owners have entered with, to an agreement with the district, that they would be looking ways to challenge it, because there is an expiring term. There's some agreements that we've entered into, such as in the mud zone, where, you know, the, all the rental units, they're not stratified. I think that would be easier, because there's no expectation there, and agreements are in perpetuity. So, I would certainly recommend that this is a valid discussion, and something that we should look into, but maybe as a phase two, once we've experimented with this approach, with, there's more jurisdictions that have sort of gone through the program. Because we do have time, the housing agreements that we have in place today, I don't think any of them are about to expire. We're still probably 10 years away from the first one expiring.
Can we contemplate this again, then, in the zoning bylaw rewrite? Because, you know, then staff have a chance to look at what Burnaby is doing, and see how the outcome of the new West case, and potentially see opportunities to move this forward. Do we have a tenant relocation policy?
I don't believe so.
Was there something else, counsel, that you should consider?
OCP policy 12.812, sufficiently addressing displacement of the district satisfaction.
But there's no policy?
No policy, but there's policy direction.
The mayor may have missed, that was one of the items that's on the to-do list on the housing report.
Oh, I thought there was a page.
Yeah, so, yes, no, we don't, but yes, it's on our page.
It just said, clarifying these for me. So, in the OCP, we do have policy 12.8 that also says, for net gain in affordable housing and you propose rezoning or redevelopment of existing rental housing or manufactured home parts must at a minimum provide one-to-one replacement. And so, is this residential rental tenure zoning for bylaw a formalization of that in some ways?
It's a policy direction. We are limited, OCP policy is limited, so what it can do, it's not regulation. So, we have a number of policies that will refer to, you know, things that we still need to do on the zoning end.
Any further discussion, or does someone want to move the recommendation, or propose an alternative?
I will move the staff recommendation and add that districts, or that staff, let staff consider Phase Two of residential rental tenure in the broader zoning bylaw.
Do you have a second, or counsel branch? Any discussion on motion? Seeing none, call a question, all is in favor? Any other questions? Question carries. Thank you. Yeah, given the time, why don't we pick this back up at quarter two, no different counsel every time we get back?
And is he agrees in here? So, I've had Terry fix it for us, so 10 minutes might give him a chance.
So, to the short session, we see back here, quarter two. Welcome back, everyone. And we're now on to our last light topic for the day, short-term rentals.
Great, thank you, counsel, community. My name is Sarah McJanet, community planner with the district, and Asia Philp is with me here. Our community presentation and STR, short-term rental discussion today, is focusing on the regulatory options that have been under discussion in Phase Two of the project. This is a really key council touchpoint and decision point in our overall project plan, as we collectively approach define preferred option as part of Phase Three. So, firstly, we will provide a quick recap of Phase Two, starting with an updated short-term rental snapshot as of May 2019. We will revisit the three alternative options that were presented and discussed during the Phase Two engagement, and summarize the results of the engagement in this phase, so who participated and how, what options were most preferred, and key insights from the community, as well as other communities that are actively regulating short-term rentals. And then the second, more substantive part of the workshop, Asia will walk through the option evaluation, and the initial recommended option for council discussion. So, we'll try to leave as much time for discussion as possible. Very quickly, this is the overall short-term rental project work plan and the phases that began last summer, and that we are working through. And our last council touchpoint with you, you will recall, was in January 2019, where we presented and got endorsement around three alternative options, and then we took those out to the community for feedback in Phase Two. Once we move forward from this point with the preferred option in Phase Three, the intent is to move into the nuts and bolts of drafting a regulatory framework for the selected option, and then advancing through a more formal approvals process and implementation. In terms of an updated rental snapshot, staff began informally monitoring short-term rentals as early as October 2016. This was done through the Airbnb platform. But starting in October 2017, we engaged a third-party monitoring service, which provided additional data to us. So, this was information that we weren't easily able to track on our own. As of October 2017, we had 270 unique rentals, short-term rentals in Squamish, and as of the end of May 2019, we were at 503 unique rentals. This is an overall increase of 213 short-term rentals since 2017. And 60, we saw 65 units grow, or growth in the last six months. Home compliance also tracks home, entire home versus partial home rentals, and there is a caveat here, that this is host-defined based on the rental platforms that are being used. So, it, in terms of our evaluation of this data, it is inexact in terms of the differentiation between the unit types, but it is something that we've been consistently monitoring. According to host compliance, since we began monitoring, we've seen a progressive increase in the proportion of entire home rentals. So, you can see, we've transitioned from 73% up to 80% in May 2019. And we've seen a, an associated decline in the partial home rentals from 27% in October of 2017, down to 20%, or up to 20%, I'm sorry, down to 20% in May of 2019. Again, although host compliance isn't an imperfect monitoring tool, it does offer observed snapshots over time. This is something that we can actively augment using data collection locally. By unit type, the proportion of single-family listings is currently at 83% versus 14% for multifamily dwellings. 3% were unknown, in terms of not being defined by the host. 95% of units are listed for a minimum nightly stay of one to seven nights, and only 1% were for eight to 14 nights, and then 20, 2%, sorry, 20, 2% were for 30 nights or more, so for longer-term stays. On the bottom of the graph, you can see the estimated rental frequency of short-term rental units for entire units over the year. In that profile, you can, you can see the spread, basically, of rental frequency. And they're based on 30-day increments, so you can see there are a number of units that are rented for zero nights within the year, so they're active listings but maybe not rented. And then, the other two higher points on that profile are rentals that occur in estimated annual nights of 31 to 60. And then at the very far right-hand side of the graph, you can also see the number of rental, entire unit rentals, over 181 units per year. And then also, we have an estimated revenue for those rental units, based on the host compliance data, and that's based on nightly unit rates, and there's a widespread there as well. Moving down to the engagement activities in Phase Two, we hosted five two-hour focus group sessions with key stakeholder groups to review and discuss proposed alternative regulatory approaches. Staff presented at those focus group sessions, public input perspectives on the short-term rentals, and key learnings that we collected in Phase One. And then we looked at and sort of did a deep dive around the, the different options that were on the table. Key questions for the participants that we solicited were, which alternative was supported, if any, and why? So, the, the different focus group sessions that we hosted included a dedicated focus group for short-term rental hosts and short-term rental operators, and we saw high participation there. We also hosted a focus group session for stratas, property managers, and the real estate sector. We met with our Squamish Integrated Housing Solutions Group, of housing, affordable housing group, as well as we met with the Board of Tourism Squamish, as well as the accommodation sector that is associated there in March. And then we also met with, and hosted a focus group with Chamber and the Squamish Economic Steering Group, the Connect Place Plan Group in April. We created a package, information package, that we posted to our website, and we presented this information package around the alternative options to the focus groups. It was also available for public comment online, and ongoing throughout Phase Two. We hosted a community open house at the Adventure Center, and that was in the, in May, early May. So, we had just over 100 people actively engaged in Phase Two. This was less than Phase One. That's common to see decline in the number of sort of active, actively engaged folks, but we do have received many feedback forms. Those continue to come in as the project progresses, and many of them addressed to council. So, in terms of themes that stood out, we heard, and many in the community reiterated a desire to see flexibility in housing accommodations, the ability to earn supplemental income, wanting to see fairness and regulation of long-term rental suites as well, and not just short-term rental. And also, we've sort of documented these in the Phase Two engagement summary. And I'll just spend a little bit of time on the actual options as well, and then I'll get into more detail around some of the, around the input that we received. So, as council is aware, and as recap, we did put forward three options to solicit feedback in Phase Two. They were synthesized and informed by the community survey results in Phase One, so we have really high participation in Phase One. There was desire to see regulation, put a balanced approach. We incorporated research from other municipalities and rescue offices as well, and then we workshop those different options with council back in January. Option A was the most permissive, allowing short-term rentals in principal or investment properties within any unit type. Option B allowed short-term rental in the principal dwelling, but not in investment properties, so it was a little bit more restrictive. And option C, further restricted option B, allowing short-term rentals in principal residences, but identified this further sub-option around short-term rentals of secondary suites and coach houses. Across the board, we proposed a limit of one short-term rental per property, and that was consistent across all three options. And for certainty, because this came up in the Phase Two engagement, we did not include an option around prohibiting short-term rentals outright or a ban. This was not presented as a recommended option back in January, due to the high level of enforcement required, and also the limited success that many communities have had in trying to put in place a full prohibition or a ban. But also, there's a recognition that came forward strongly in Phase One, that short-term rentals add to the supply and diversity of visitor accommodation in Squamish, and are part of our tourism infrastructure, and also allow for supplemental income when those units are not being used. It was very clear to staff through Phase It was very clear to staff through Phases One and Two that we are seeing an increase in the number of short-term rentals, but that with the status quo and without additional enforcement and resourcing and education and the consideration of life safety, this is becoming a bit more problematic because we're seeing this additional growth. So that's why we've come forward to provide an update with council today to really talk about what is the preferred option that we would like to explore. So in terms of the Phase Two inputs, we've provided a summary in the council report and attachment. We saw a preference for a more permissive approach, so options A and B were the most preferred based on the feedback received. There was desire, again, for flexibility in the regulation. A lot of people commented on the desire to be able to rent short-term secondary suites and coach houses. There was general consensus that business license and safety requirements are reasonable, and that in terms of prioritization of regulatory requirements for maintaining neighborhood livability, parking was the biggest, the biggest item that was raised. There is a desire for clear, easy-to-understand regulations that are easily implemented and enforced, and there was very little support for any kind of caps. We heard this in Phase One, we asked similar questions in Phase Two to really get, again, another sense of whether caps such as a night cap, a number of nights rented, or a guest cap, or a density cap, for example, of the number of short-term rentals in a specific area. So very little support, again, shown for that. At the same time, we also heard some additional commentary that there is a need to focus continuously on rental and workforce housing through all means available, and that in considering the different priorities and objectives for the project, that we should be carefully considering the prioritization of workforce, workforce housing, that not all the objectives are equally weighted or should be equally weighted. We also heard a call to proceed with caution, given the current housing market and the vacancy rate of less than 1%. We also heard that there are a number of stratas within Squamish that are prohibiting short-term rentals in their bylaws, and only a couple, we understand, are actually permitting short-term rentals outright. And so that is the summary of the Phase Two inputs, and I'm going to turn it over to Asia now to continue with the options evaluation.
Sarah, does anybody have any questions before we transition into the preferred option?
I note that one of the sessions with the Realtors, Strata, Property Managers, April, Phase Two, refers to an interest in seeing the district consider zoning by geography, more permissive, for example, in commercial areas, zones more restrictive in residential. Did that come up among other stakeholders or input providers, and was that pursued any further with, for example, looking elsewhere?
Through the chair, the geographic approach, we asked that question in Phase Two, or sorry, in Phase One during the short-term rental survey. There was a high, there was a high preference for having a consistent approach throughout the community, although, that being said, there were a number of respondents that did talk about favoring short-term rentals in commercial areas and in the downtown, but more generally speaking, there was support for seeing something consistently applied across. And that was the only focus group in Phase Two where that geographic zoning discussion really surfaced.
Thank you.
With the real estate community.
Okay, thanks. So staffer recommending option C is the preferred approach, and this is highlighted in this graphic here. We took into consideration existing district policy documents, as well as our community and stakeholder feedback, as well as the research that we did for other municipalities and jurisdictions. And it's our thoughts that option C is best positioned to protect our long-term rental housing supply, as it restricts the short-term rentals to primary residents only in option C, as well as restricting it to a shared unit or while the owner or the permanent tenant is temporarily away. So staffer also recommending the further step to prohibit short-term rentals in secondary suites and coach houses at this time, as these unit types contribute significantly to the market rental portion of our housing continuum. Option C also allows residents to short-term rent all or part of their principal residence, but it also moderates the total number of possible short-term rentals, and it reserves the secondary or accessory dwelling units for potential long-term rental. And we're estimating that upwards of 250 short-term rental units might be possible under option C, and this would legalize or legitimize just under half of the current entire-unit short-term rental listings and the vast majority of the partial or shared-unit listings. So to round out the regulatory approach proposed, staffer also recommending that the short-term rental framework include the following: allow both owners and renters to participate, renters with owner permission, require a business license to operate, and be restricted to the one dwelling unit per property. And these recommendations have been kind of consistent throughout the process. New additions are that we are thinking parking regulations. We could require one additional space if it's a shared unit, but that we wouldn't require any additional spaces for entire-unit listings, and this is running under the assumption that if the permanent resident is away, that their residential parking spaces would be available for the visitor and the user of the short-term rental unit. And then lastly, we're proposing a maximum limit of 10 guests per short-term rental unit as a cap, and just a quick note that we did check the current Airbnb listings in Squamish, and there were 15 units that were on offer for 10 or more guests. So very, very few units that were allowing over 10 guests. So I'll quickly step through the rationale for the option C recommendation, and I'm going to start with the overarching goals for the project, and these are shown here. There's definitely strong tensions and trade-offs between these goals. They are in competition with each other, and some of the proposed options are better at supporting some of these goals than others. So housing as a core need was raised in several of the focus groups, and staffer suggesting that this goal should be addressed as the highest priority above supporting tourism and the neighborhood livability goals. Housing affordability, if it's given the highest priority, then option C is likely the best approach here to protect our long-term rental supply. Options A and B could incentivize the further commodification of our housing supply, as the value of a property could increase if it can generate a higher level of supplementary income through a short-term rental use than through a long-term rental option or no rental at all. Option C aims to encourage investors in real estate to long-term rent their investment, and option C also encourages property owners with accessory dwelling units to long-term rent their units. And although, staff, we do recognize that there is a strong housing issue facing our community, and it's a much larger issue that can be solved through regulating short-term rentals. There are 500 units that are currently within the district as short-term rentals, and under a conservative scenario, we've estimated that there might be up to 133 short-term rental units that could be available for long-term rental. And this is based on a rental frequency of entire units being rented out for more than 90 days in a, in a year. So even if a small percentage of these rental units were put towards the long-term rental supply, it could have a positive impact. So we looked at four key criteria to try to do a comparative analysis of the three options. It was a qualitative analysis that was done. And so in terms of the effect on long-term rental supply, we think that option C may present the best opportunity to protect, maintain, and grow our long-term rental supply and positively impact rental housing availability. With regards to neighborhood impacts, most of the potential neighborhood impacts around safety, parking, and noise can be mitigated through zoning and business license regulations. So there's not really an option that's better than others in regards to neighborhood impacts. Although, we think that with a primary residency requirement, which is option B or option C, the neighborhood impacts might be more likely to be better managed just because there's somebody that's present on the property. And with regards to compliance and enforcement, option C would likely result in lower voluntary compliance and the need for a higher level of enforcement, as it is the more restrictive and limiting of the three options. This higher level of enforcement might be required initially out of the gate, and then it could be that we would need less resourcing over time as things settle out. And if there's not adequate resourcing made available, at a minimum, adopting a short-term rental regulatory framework will at least establish clear rules for the community to play by, and it will allow us to license and inspecting us to address the life safety factor, as well as better manage neighborhood issues and generally track and gather information on short-term rentals. So we have a quick snapshot here of rental housing impacts, and our current rental housing situation in Squamish, I think this might have been reviewed earlier today, so we've got the 0.3% rental vacancy rate. Renters comprise 27% of our Squamish households. And according to the Housing Needs Assessment that Nicola completed last year, there is a critical need for over 488 new affordable rental units in the district. Other municipalities have attempted to try to quantify the number of entire-unit short-term rentals that might be available for long-term rental. They've identified entire-unit listings that were rented so often that they were unlikely to be somebody's principal residence. And this analysis is based on the assumption that these entire units are not somebody's principal residence, and that they could be rented long-term if short-term rental was not an allowable use. And I just wanted to note that we did receive a lot of public feedback to date that has definitely contradicted that assumption, with a lot of community members and short-term rental hosts saying that they would not rent their unit long-term even if short-term rental was not permitted. So I just wanted to call that out clearly. If we apply this analysis to Squamish, then under a conservative scenario, as I said before, there'd be up to 103 entire-unit short-term rentals that could be available for long-term rental. And that 133 includes all unit types, so not just suites and coach houses, but also single-family dwellings and multifamily units. So on the tourism impact side, we know that tourism's a critical component to our Squamish's economy, and it's an important sector. Visitor accommodation can impact that sector. There's approximately 520 commercial accommodation units in Squamish, and in 2018, the average occupancy rate was 69% for the year, but this jumps up to 82% occupancy during the summer season, and there's a peak of an 87% occupancy rate, which was from August of 2018, so August last summer. It's unknown what the occupancy rate or the booking rates are for short-term rentals, but at least during the summer periods when there could be like not very much availability in our commercial accommodation supply, short-term rentals could definitely be made available and would help fulfill that need for accommodation. We think that it's definitely a viable way to increase our accommodation supply during event-related peaks such as local festivals or sporting events that are happening. And to quickly touch on neighborhood impacts, short-term rentals for tourist accommodation, we have heard that they have the potential to generate issues in single-family and multifamily neighborhoods. So we reviewed the formal bylaw complaints that reference either short-term rentals or Airbnb, and since 2016, there's only been 15 complaints that have been formally logged. And the majority of these complaints just generally complained that there was a short-term rental operating. They didn't go into any further detail. There is very few that kind of focused in explicitly on noise, safety, or parking, although during our public consultation, parking was a frequently raised issue.
Do you have comparative numbers for long-term rentals or non-rental on occupied?
No, we didn't do that comparison. So we know it's, it's been really challenging to try to determine how many short-term rentals are located within suites or coach houses in the district. We would have to comb through listings individually to try to get this level of accuracy in our data. We could do approximations, so we did stuff like we searched through for terms like secondary suite or coach house in the Airbnb listings. When we put in the filters for an entire unit as well as suite, it produced 94 listings when we did that analysis last month. We're not aware of any municipalities that have done an analysis of a before and after they implemented their short-term rental regulations in order to try and estimate the number of short-term rentals that might have gone back into the long-term rental pool. However, there's been some research papers that have been published that we've reviewed where they contain findings that short-term rentals are negatively impacting the long-term rental market, so I'll just quickly read out some of those citations. There is a 2018 report from McGill University, they estimated, and this is for New York City, there was between 7,000 and 13,000 units of housing that have been removed from New York City's long-term rental market, and that by reducing the supply, the short-term rentals led to an increase in the median long-term rental rate by 1.4% over the past three years. There is another report, also out of McGill in 2017. It looked at the impact of Airbnb on Canadian housing markets, and it compared Vancouver, Toronto, and Montreal, and it found that short-term rentals removed housing from the rental markets in these cities. And that in some areas, it represented short-term rentals comprised more than 2% of their total housing stock. In 2017, there is also a report published by MIT and UCLA working together that found, it did a scan across the United States, and it found that a 10% increase in Airbnb listings led to a 0.39% increase in rents and a 0.64% increase in house prices. And this study controlled for most of the other major variables that impact housing markets. It was very thorough. So just a quick note on our current zoning regulations. So I threw up the bed and breakfast definition and short-term rental definition. In 2017, we brought forward an omnibus of zoning amendments, and this was the, the main intent of this was to allow for two suites, so one secondary suite and one coach house per lot. And with that change, we also updated definitions for accessory dwelling units, multi-unit flex units, short-term rental. We updated the definition of secondary suite and added a bunch of general regulations around these unit types with the overall intent to encourage and allow for a broader range of accessory units to help increase our supply of affordable long-term rental housing. The short-term rental definition was brought in to provide additional clarification that this use is not permitted in residential areas. And the zoning bylaw, we saw it as not only a tool to regulate what is permitted and not permitted on a property, but also as a communication tool. So we brought in the STR definition to help provide clear communication and kind of reduce the amount of misinterpretation of the bylaws. And the current requirements for a bed and breakfast license right now are that you need to have the right zoning to allow for bed and breakfast use. The bed and breakfast needs to take place in a unit type that is permitted. It's currently not permitted in secondary suites, accessory dwelling units, or multi-unit flex units. And lastly, they have to prove adequate parking on-site, and that's to get a bed and breakfast business license. So staffer also recommending a precautionary approach to implementation to establish more restrictive regulations initially, followed by a program of close restrictive regulations initially, followed by a program of close monitoring so that these regulations can be adapted to address any shifting conditions, changes in the short-term rental and the long-term rental markets and tourism and accommodation sector changes and also to learn from going through the implementation process. So we want to do monitoring and evaluation to enable us to review all the intended and unintended consequences of short-term rental regulations and make those adjustments. And this approach would include examining, looking at including accessory dwelling units for short-term rental in the future once the enforcement implications are well-understood and we can see the initial impact of the regulatory changes. And a precautionary approach is preferred over taking a more permissive approach initially. It's easier and safer from a regulatory and a legal perspective to begin with tighter restrictions and then loosen up the regulations moving forwards. So we're seeking your council's endorsement on a preferred option to move forward to draft the regulatory framework and make the relevant bylaw amendments as well as to provide us with feedback or direction on any specific regulatory aspects that you'd like us to focus on and that we transition into discussion. Thanks very much.
Can you put the resolutions back up?
Yeah.
On to Race, Mayor Elliott, have such a question.
Thank you. Just going back to the change you made to the definition or the addition of the definition of short-term rental, did the zoning bylaws permit rentals for less than 30 days before that?
The zoning bylaw was silent on the 30, around the 30 days. That came in when we brought in the short-term rental regulation.
I can clarify that. The zoning bylaw before that would default to either a bed and breakfast, which had to be operated in your dwelling unit, meaning that the dwelling unit had to be used for dwelling purposes first, or it would default to tourist accommodation, which is permitted as, is permitted use in certain zones. But it didn't, didn't speak to the amount of time that somebody's allowed to stay.
So what would it have said about just your average single-family home as far as occupation was for rental?
Then you could run a bed and breakfast out of it if you, if there were, if the single-family home was occupied as a residence.
There was no explicit language in the definition that spoke to that. It had to be rented for more than, more than 30 days. That was absent from the definition. Fair enough. We still incentivizing secondary suites and coach houses by waiting fees?
We are DCCs, develop cost charts. The building permit fees are now being collected. It's on my plate to come back to council with the changes to those, to the fee structure. I think the last conversation we had was at the end of February and I haven't had the time yet to come back, but it's on my plan.
Just, sorry, I'm rejecting a clarifying question on that. Are people notifying when they apply for this DCC rebate that short-term rentals are not currently permitted explicitly?
No, they're not. Just like we're not notifying people, you know, what the, what they can't do with any of the bill they currently apply to. We get a lot of inquiries whether it's, you know, can you do anything else with a secondary suite other than residential and then in that case we explain to people what is a residential use.
You said one of your focus groups was with the Squamish Integrated Housing Solutions Group, but I didn't see their feedback forms here. Did they fill them out?
Through the chair, there was verbal feedback provided and notes taken, but no additional forms or something.
In your proposal, does it exclude investment properties? Does it explicitly?
Just for clarification, do you mean does option C correct?
It excludes.
Investment properties.
And my other clarifying question is, are you proposing that we have good neighbor policies like contact people and that sort of thing? Yeah, I think we haven't dived into that level of detail. We're trying to get, okay, what's the overall direction first, but we've been doing that research in the background and there, most of the municipalities that we look at do have some thing, particularly a contact person that needs to be a certain, within a certain response time and available 24 hours. So it makes sense to include something like that in our proposal.
We, we talk in here about enforcement, but there's no business case. So it's, it's challenging to make a decision about this particular option when we don't know how much we'd be collecting in fees approximately, what the enforcement costs might look like, do the two offset each other? What would you suggest we set aside for legal costs? Because if you're going, we know from other municipalities, if you're going to do this, you've got to pursue it right to the junction sort of point because some people don't want to comply. So is that, it, it's hard to choose an option without knowing what the impact is on the district itself and whether we can even do this because we've got lots of other priorities.
I can clarify that. That is something that we're looking at. It's, it's going to involve some time and there's some uncertainties in terms of what the subscription rate is going to be and what the enforcement costs are going to be like. So we see it in the long, in the, in the longer run as being something that will be partially cost-recoverable and maybe not fully. But at the beginning, it's expected that it's going to have a cost to implement. However, implementation is a tool. So right now, you know, we have very restrictive regulations. Most of short-term rentals that are occurring are occurring illegally and we could be spending lots of money on enforcement, but we're, we're not because we're not actively enforcing it. So I think for, from our perspective, we wanted to find out what's the approach that we're going to take and then we can come back with information around, okay, what's the, you know, the first couple of years of enforcement look like. We're right now estimating that as a minimum, you know, we're probably looking at if we wanted to enforce harder, that 0.5 with a full-time employee and then some legal costs for, for those highly offensive cases.
If I might through the chair, staff had quite a robust discussion around this prior to bringing it to council at this time in terms of this, you know, cart before the horse in terms of the costs of this option. But in terms of the project itself, it was important to bring all the engagement and results of that to council and union. And then secondly, you know, it's quite a wide scope in terms of very restrictive. And the idea was to get basically a temperature check of council, a direction of the first option so that staff could continue to do the work based on that option in terms of the costing and bring it back to council to Mr. Melones' point is that we are enforcing really anything at all now and there's a lot of cost to that we're not applying it. So if we get an option, we can get the regulation in place, bring costing laws to council and then we can navigate it. That was our rationale for why we brought it to council.
Counselor Stone?
My initial plan clarification was touched on by Counselor Race, but I just want to clarify, so if, before the 2018 changes, if I had come forward and I wanted to rent my house, I would have fallen under bed and breakfast regulations.
That's correct.
So I would have needed a permit under those and my house would have had to fall, so secondary suites, my house would have had to fall under those categorizations of what a bed and breakfast is, of the two units, the shared space.
Yes.
Thank you. My second question was, there's, across the board is that there's just one unit per property title that can be eligible. My question there is, so if I have a house and I'm renting out two rooms in it, it's likely that that would fall under two separate listings. But, so question there of like, are we limiting people's intention where it's still their primary residence, but they're, they're renting out two separate rooms?
That's definitely a tricky scenario. The, the one license per property, I think you could have one listing that rented both or showed both those rooms under the one listing and then that would be okay. And then if it, just one room was rented, then your license goes to that one room and you couldn't do it to the other room if it was a different party that wanted to come in. Does, does that?
I don't think it really works that way. You don't, I think you have to have, from my experience, this not from renting my house, but from seeing listings is that when there are two rooms within a, within a single house, they are separate listings because there might be different people that want to rent those separate rooms at the same time. So you can't have two units on the same listing. So that's a piece that I think is worth a little bit of thought.
I have a couple of questions and I'll go to Counselor Race. So just to make sure I understand, the proposal with option C is that this would only be allowed in, in units where the renter is sharing the landlord's front door and bathroom and kitchen, so they're not separate entrances and all of that, is that correct?
So there's, that's the shared scenario, I believe. And then if the primary resident went away on vacation and was absent from the property, they could short-term rent that unit while they were away.
So is an unintended consequence this, of this then, that it disadvantages women, for example, who might not feel as safe with someone in their physical space where, you know, there's separate entrances and so on, there isn't that issue?
I think that could be an unintended consequence potentially.
Counselor Race?
Was any thought given to expanding the B and B regulations to, in effect widen, to, to allow more of these units to qualify, or these homes or businesses to qualify as B and Bs? I think, I mean, one of the aggravations for me of this is people who are essentially running a hotel without all the mutual hotel costs, they're not paying commercial taxation, no business license, there's probably a lack of safety considerations and so forth. And so trying to legitimize them through our zoning and regulate them, then we still have the tourism impact, we still have people making supplemental incomes and so forth. Recognize it as what it is, it's a business. It's just being carried out of somebody's home like a lot of other home-based businesses. So have we given any thought to trying to widen that B and Bs? Is it maybe too restrictive right now?
Okay, yeah, through the chair, we can take different approaches when we get into the details of the actual bylaw amendments. And so option C could be implemented through kind of an opening up of the bed and breakfast kind of approach. Or other municipalities have just retained bed and breakfast as it traditionally stood and they didn't touch that and then they just added short-term rental regulations around allowing it through primary residents or whatever course they determined. So there's, there's different approaches. One, keep the traditional B and Bs, add in short-term rental regulations on top of that. Or two, kind of like fold them in together and kind of expand on what was already previously permitted. Does that, you're getting? Okay.
Counselor Harper? Thank you. Whenever this, I was struck that it was more restrictive than I thought we were going to, we were going to see, given where, or last time we touched it. And, and I see some of the rationale there, but I'm really concerned about the, about the, just the effects of this for, we've had some actually very well-written correspondence from, well, throughout the feedback process and the, and probably there's been some, and they bring up many good points where the affordability across the sort of the whole housing spectrum is, is, is a real issue for, for people and, and having the, having the ability to earn that supplemental income and have the flexibility we hear, we hear whether it's family coming or just having the turnover or some of the restrictions with, with a long-term tenant. We're able to knock on effects, we know the effect that we're intending to have as far as the, the, the long-term rentals and we are hearing some people say they're not going to go, oh, if we can't short-term rent, it's not going in the long-term market. I doubt that's 100% of those units and it's probably not zero, you know, it's somewhere in the midst there. But I'm really concerned about, about, about that is people are scratching, it is a way that people are able to move through this or that housing spectrum and now they've just got to that spot where they have a, whatever the unit is and keeping them there. So I'm really having a hard time reconciling how all those fit together. I don't really think I have enough information about what those results have been to really push forward very quickly on this, on that more, more study. So I'm curious if the, comment on some of those, some of those pieces.
Yeah, I'll jump in if I might. The in-phase one, we heard loud and clear from a lot of locals as well as those that self-identified as short-term rental hosts, that short-term rental option allowed for some flexibility and some earning of supplemental income when the unit was not being used for other kind of family or for family or friends or what have you, or parents, for example, that are visiting occasionally and whatnot. So that was really loud and clear, just and the affordability piece overall, the high cost of living, high cost of childcare, all of that came, was a huge area of concern that we've continued to hear about. In terms of the, the crux decision around whether to allow suites within secondary dwellings and coach houses, that's really something that a lot of communities have been struggling with. And for example, as noted in the report, Kelowna, you know, four or five weeks ago just had a very similar decision point about whether to allow, to go with suites or not and their vote was really close, I think it was a 4-3 vote around that. Looking back at the, the short-term rental host responses within the phase one survey, we asked those that have rented their, rented short-term rental within Squamish in the last 12 months, 46% said that they were renting out a secondary suite or a coach house. Some did not answer that, that question, they didn't want to disclose that. But that might be low, like 46% might be low. So we can, we can sort of look at that data that we collected locally to know that of the short-term rental suites that are being listed in Squamish, notwithstanding how they're, they're being defined on their rental platform, we know that there's a lot of suites. And so that's really the crux piece and whether or not we want to preserve the option of allowing long-term rental around those units. And I guess the, we know that there's a strong financial incentive to rent short-term over long-term and a lot of people also commented on struggles with the long-term rental, like the provincial sort of tenancy act and experience, negative experience with long-term renters in the past and limited flexibility. So I think there's a high value around flexibility, concern around long-term rental of those units, so that's what we're, we're dealing with. And so as a precautionary first step, that was where the recommendation sat to sort of dip the toe in the water, begin to look at legitimizing short-term rentals within primary residences first and foremost and then to proceed cautiously and do a lot of valuation around, around that, you know, that there's, that's not going to please everyone in the community for sure. It's a, it's a tough, tough decision.
Mara?
So I, I come at this, you know, after survey on the last council where we put forward a housing first motion that passed unanimously and I very much consider housing a human right, not a commodity. So at the same time, I recognize that some people are affording their single-family homes because they're making income off of a secondary suite. So I think for me to be able to support C, and I think it is the one we should explore further at this time, is that we can't do this in isolation because then I don't think it addresses the concerns and some of the flexibility that people are looking for. But I totally get the staff's point about why you wouldn't go permissive and then try and ratchet it back, that, that the order of things is to go more restrictive and then loosen things up as we get.
things up as we get a handle on it. And I say this knowing that this regulation does not solve affordable housing. That's why we had a whole conversation this morning about affordable housing. Because we know, and that is a pillar in our strategic plan, that we, we just can't take our foot off that gas pedal. There's so much work that needs to be done to just put long-term rentals into this marketplace. But the problem I have with just regulating this is that we need to look at incentives, incentives for long-term rentals. So right now, if I have a legitimate secondary suite that I provide to a long-term renter, I pay two utility bills. If I am doing an Airbnb, I am, I am not doing that. So, so I think we need to look at all the rules and regulations we've put around long-term rentals and see if we can flip that equation a little bit. Because we know the return, based on a lot of letters, is higher if you're short-term renting. So what can we do to bring maybe the cost down and make it more of an incentive for long-term renters? So that's one thing I think we should look at as we bring this regulation forward. The Squamish Integrated Housing Solutions Group mentioned a really important policy tool that I think we also need to look at that addresses the flexibility piece that our citizens are looking for. And that is the workforce housing agreements that Whistler has with some of their employers. So if you rent suites and homes, the landlords are signing the agreement with the employer. And so if someone trashes your suite, the employer comes and takes care of it. If the tenant is untenable, then the employer comes and, you know, takes care of that tenant. It takes the burden off the landlord. So this might be a way that our citizens can actually house seasonal workers and not have that pain of a long-term lease with a tenant that they may not enjoy. Their agreement is actually with the employer. And, and so say that they need the flexibility because they have family coming to visit them, so they rent it from May to September for some of our seasonal employers. And then the rest of the year, they can use it for, for family. So I think it's important to actually really look at that, that piece around our workforce housing and that flexibility for people. I myself absolutely need a business case for the enforcement piece of this. I couldn't go into budget and go, yeah, it's probably half a person. If, if we're serious about regulating, we have to be serious about enforcing. And if that is half a person, a whole person, two people, I mean, Tefeno has a whole person. So we don't even know what you're proposing in terms of what our license fee would be, how would we pay for enforcement. I think we have to have a much clearer view on this because I think my opinion would shift if you tell me that, you know, the license fees wouldn't cover the costs of enforcement. And I've suddenly got to put aside a whole, when I've got other priorities that I want to take care of. So, so those sort of things in my mind. And then lastly, if we do go down this route, I think that we should put in place, bring some people up and do some training for landlords who might move back into the long-term rental market about how to create leases that give them the most flexibility, how to, you know, develop good relationships with their tenants, how to pick a good tenant. Like I think we've got to be part of, of that solution. And, and I think for me, overall, the sad thing that we don't see in all these letters is the words of our Integrated Housing Solutions Group that see this crisis on a day in and day out. Like their words and how they would express this, Staff summarized it, but we get a lot of passionate letters from people doing Airbnb. And then there's all the people who are dealing with this crisis on a day-in, day-out basis. I mean, we've had people in the chambers in tears begging us to do something about affordable housing. So it's just unfortunate that their words aren't captured anywhere in this report. But, so that's, I'm, I'm happy to support C, but with kind of those caveats around it. I mean, I might be tempted to go to B if there's no way we can enforce C through our budget. So that's, that's where I'm sitting.
Councilor Stone?
Okay, I just took all the words in my mouth, to some degree. But yeah, I think I am leaning towards supporting option C. I think there's no doubt that this is challenging topic, and it is a small piece of a much bigger issue. I think none of us expect regulating short-term rentals is going to solve the affordable housing issue that we have in our community. I appreciate all the work that Staff have done in terms of community engagement, in terms of research. The piece that continues to sit with me is the reality that people are using short-term rental revenue of secondary suites and accessory dwelling units to be able to afford housing that they may otherwise not be able to. And so we're artificially inflating the market, which makes it more out of, it makes it less affordable as you continue to, to go on. So there's a short-term gain there that's resulting in a much bigger pain across the system. And I think that's the piece that we're trying to get at here a little bit. It's not a perfect solution, but the reality, I think if I go back and look at the history of where secondary suites have come in and accessory dwelling units, they've always been presented in the perspective of they are planning tools to help increase density and diverse forms of housing for residents of our area. They're not intended to be businesses within our residential neighborhoods. We have a growth management boundary that puts a lot of pressure on the areas where we are able to develop. And so providing alternative forms of housing is really important. And that's where secondary suites may be used, starting to come into the conversation. And I think it's really important to maintain that perspective of them as we continue to go forward. So I do think the mayor brought up some really important points in terms of how we're actually going to regulate this, what the costs are, and I look forward to seeing those come forward.
So Councilor Harper, then Councilor Reese, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. Further to Mayor Lee's points with the utilities and the secondary suites, I believe it's the same case in critical rub for the, for the B and B. Is that, is that correct?
There's additional utility fees to charge.
Yes, and maybe working around that where there's, there is a framework that we can modify at the same time, so that there's a channel for legitimization of some of these, a portion of these. I'm really worried about losing the, the capacity or tourism capacity. I know the reports that we had room in the, in the local hotels and, and, and like, if you can't, if you're not, if the options aren't available, there's a whole, there's a big chunk of our tourism economy that relies on having these spots, which then, it is such a, I know, it's, it's so intertwined where then that creates jobs and people need to have somewhere to live and then, you know, it's this, it's a, it's a whole, it's a whole thing. I'm really concerned about the cost to just lose, if we lost that capacity, where, where does it go? Probably goes where there's accommodation, which if you're traveling, you just keep traveling and you're staying with certain, your day trip is Squamish, instead of basing your trip in Squamish. And all that, all that opportunity to come along with that. So I'm, I'm, where we were before, which was a modified C of some sort, like restrictive, but had some more flexibility in there is where I would like this to be if that's done through some further incentivizing the long-term and potentially adjusting the B and B regulations to open it up slightly to give them a channel to, to fill some of that. But I, yeah, I'm, I'm not really, I'm not on with, on board with the full restrictive measures. Granted, I know the enforcement challenges are starting more open and restricting. Maybe that's going to take care of itself when we look at a business case of enforcement, which is, that's, that's where I end at this point.
Councilor Reese?
Thank you. And I'm also with option C. I, I think back to the history of this and, and in the mid-'90s, the debate around putting secondary suites in houses, because before that they were prohibited. But the rationale was to provide a level of housing for people who were in accommodation, for people who were working in the community, living in the community, that just didn't exist before. And I just, was to encourage long-term rental stock. And then last term, when we added on the provision you could have a coach house as well as a secondary suite, and the purpose of that was to add to our long-term housing stock, and we provided incentives and waived fees and so forth. And so I think for me, one of the drivers is that I don't think we can be serious about being serious about affordable housing unless we are prepared to try and enforce this and to try to make this work and to try to get those units that were always designed for long-term rental, back into the long-term rental market. Otherwise, I think we're just kidding ourselves. So I, I have very little sympathy, I'm afraid, for the people that are in the short-term rental market because it's always been prohibited, it's never been allowed. And there's, and they should have known that, and they knew or should have known that they were breaking the law and they did this. And so it's hard to have sympathy with them. And I take it that these are assisting with mortgages and stuff, that's what they used to call these long-term rental suites, actually, as mortgage helpers. And it would be very easy for people to go back to that and may not quite as much income. But from my experience as a residential landlord in Squamish, there's also a lot less management. You don't have to change the sheets every night, clean the room afterwards before the next tenant comes in, et cetera, et cetera. I, I would be interested, as the mayor mentioned about some incentives for long-term, happy to look at any number of different options there. And also, I, I, I mean, I, there are possibly some legitimate business opportunities for people who want to sort of compete on a level playing field with the hotels and pensions that we have in town for B and Bs. And so I would be prepared to look at widening, Staff considering widening the regulations around B and Bs to allow some of these that might be suitable for it to be legitimized and properly regulated and ensure we don't have any health safety issues and they pay the proper level of taxation and so forth as a proper commercial business should. And that would include the parking regulation because I think that is a key consideration in neighborhood, from my experience, of parking for, for whatever number of accommodation we determine. So I'll, I'll go with C and leave you with those comments.
Councilor Stone? Councilor Anderson?
Yes, I'll also be supporting option C as presented. It's been an exhausting day, not only because of the heat, not only because we've gone through four affordable housing reports today, all in diverse aspects, but because we have, and I'm sure I'm not alone, read every single piece of correspondence that's come our way, emails and otherwise presented to us. As a former property manager, I do understand the risks and the tenancy act issues. Not all of these things are going to be within our control, but it seems, it sounds to me that there's consensus around the table that we're really committed on looking for incentives towards long-term rental. With respect to the level of restrictions being proposed, I'm satisfied that the regulatory fairness has been evaluated conscientiously in the report we received. I'm also satisfied that Staff have indicated what needs to be revisited later or might need to be and what is not yet clearly understood. It's a phased regulation, regulation approach, taking stock before the next steps. And I think the public, we should do our best to promote that that is our approach. Finally, there are diverse comments regarding neighborhood impacts. I do appreciate that there are some skepticism, but also other kinds of feedback. In my own neighborhood, the streets were created in the 1940s and '50s, and there's just limited capacity for parking in certain situations. In other neighborhoods, the circumstances are quite different. So this is a diversity of situation also that we need to take into account. Thank you.
Councilor French, back to Councilor Reese.
Okay. I'm comfortable with option C, and I acknowledge the effort and work that Staff has put into pulling all this together. It's a tough issue. And I think that an admirable job is being done to get us to this point. And then the citizen participation in this issue has been extraordinary as well. We've had some really intelligent feedback. And while I feel that there's a segment of our community that we haven't heard from, I'm confident in the feelings of that segment. And I think we at this table are taking those folks into consideration as we move through this. I, I too like the idea of incentivizing, further incentivizing long-term rental strategies. And what that could look like, I don't know, but I'm looking forward to Staff coming back to us with some ideas of, of what we could do there. And having spent a lot of time on this issue now for a bunch of months, I, I wish I had this insight weeks ago. I feel that the term bed and breakfast is really outdated and doesn't serve us well. I don't know that there's anything we can do about that at this point because it is a well-established term with definitions. But in 2018, I just feel like bed and breakfast is not relevant to anybody anymore with our internet's reality. Thanks.
Councilor Reese?
Thank you. And one thing I forgot to mention was enforcement. Human nature being what it is, I just know we are going to have to be prepared to enforce this regardless of what solution comes up. And for me, it, having dealt with it through a career, sometimes you have to go after people and make an example of them. And so I think we are going to have to be prepared, if we are serious and we are committed to the housing issues that this represents, that I think we're going to have to be serious about enforcement. And with respect to the mayor, there is never a business case around this, it just won't exist. It will never work, but, but I think if we put money aside in the budget and choose carefully with some offenders, we're, it will get out. And what it means very often is, you know, a very high '90s percentage of court cases that are started, settled before trial. You don't have to go the whole distance, especially when the other side realizes that they're going to lose. And so you can negotiate payment of costs, you can negotiate all kinds of things so that the long-term cost of the district is actually minimized, and in some cases, completely entirely recovered in a particular instance. So I just think we're going to have to get our heads around that because it's great to say we'll just see how the public does with it, but I, I'm just not confident with that.
So I have a question and some comments of my own. With our DCCs, where we've given people pass on some of those, do we have clear records where we could theoretically use that as a starting point for enforcement if we so wish?
Yes, we do.
So I guess, I'm not personally quite there on C yet, and there's a few reasons for that. I, I could get there, I think, if there was, because we're talking about, you know, the one hypothesis is that out of 500, you could get 130-ish onto the long-term market, which leaves 370 units, who knows where. And to me, I feel like we're missing some sort of opportunity there. And whether there's a clear path with a fairly high bar that allows people to legitimize with, you know, reasonable taxation and fees and so on, so, you know, and that one could go into long-term or something, but just so that, you know, whatever we do doesn't just throw away those 370 units because I think, again, that would be a real missed opportunity. And I think a lot of the letters we have gotten, if there was a clear path, again, with a, a high bar, it would satisfy another of the concerns that I've seen. You know, we've got this van life camping discussion, and part of that, you know, the gay economy is mentioned earlier today. And there's been bad with all of this, but I think as a society, there's a lot of change in this idea of flexibility and choice and, you know, they may change jobs and where you live, and it's definitely not for everyone. But I, I feel like there should be, especially in a tourism town, a fair bit of accommodation for that to the degree we can, without losing sight of long-term rental. And that's another key piece of this for me is that, you know, the primary problem is the lack of long-term rental, and it doesn't seem like we have clear evidence that this will really solve this. We have some theories and things that we want to try, and I understand why we'd want to take the more precautionary approach. But without clear evidence, it's a bit, has, I'm a bit hesitant to come up too, too strong initially. A final thought is with the marijuana, our community was fairly proactive and started putting in zoning and so on before it was legal. And sort of, to my mind, sent some signal, probably some people, that, you know, you can kind of read the tea leaves and, and, you know, Airbnb seems like it's a fairly legitimate thing, it would be legitimate, and it is an assumption. seems like it's a fairly legitimate thing, would be legitimate, and it is an assumption, but we've maybe given some indication where it's not an entirely unreasonable assumption on something this far. And so I think that's something we should consider to some degree in terms of how aggressively we move forward on restricting things. So, yeah, I think for me, the primary thing to get me to option C would be a clear path for some people that wanted to legitimize what we call a bed and breakfast, but to legitimize some of these that aren't in your actual suite. So where, does that give you enough feedback where you'd just like to take it away, or would you like some to move this, or?
Well, I'll move that with the addition of the wording, taking into account comments made immediately June 11, 2018.
Counsel French, second. Any further, Mr. Buckstein, do you know?
Oh.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Staff, is that giving you enough clarity?
Yes.
Okay. I'm slumming.
I have a question, but process-wise, generally ask it after, just for clarity, not our options.
I think we want the motion, so.
It's not around the motion, it's for the.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, no, I'm asking process around the motion. Yeah, we asked it. How about I all ask it, because you're all the suspense. The chair, I've heard you say, Counsel Brett Gill, that you want us to come back with language to talk about legitimize what is not your actual suite. So that, to me, is not option C, that's a more permissive option. So this option doesn't really come back, but the framework for option C, the enforcement business case and everything around it. Are you asking for language in the event the council wants to go more, in our back pocket, depending?
Well, I guess what I had in mind was, and maybe it's contradictory to the resolution as before, but that while generally option C may be where we go, there's some path for people that want to open a bed and breakfast, where there's something in another suite. It's, I'm not sure that it's quite the, I don't know, maybe that is option B to some degree, but.
Counsel Herbert?
I think we're in similar space with this. I'm trying to figure out how to articulate. Is the B and, our current B and B policy is encompassed somewhere in zoning? Is that correct? So then maybe in parallel with this, that's where that gets developed, and some potential modifications there, so that, so that, I feel that it should affect, the regulation should, could potentially affect the business case of doing, oh, this is really easy, it's turnkey, way I go, sometime I computer, I'm a Airbnb host, although I recognize it takes more time to be, to do than that, but versus going through a regulatory process to make sure that everything is legitimate and safe, and maybe that's encompassed in that case. To me, the B and B is a short-term rental, so having this two, you're there for the night or two nights, so I don't, maybe that's where that, where that path comes, and I don't know what's contained in that, which is.
Counsel Reese.
No, that's good. I don't know exactly where I'm going on this one either. You know, no, but I mean, it is a separate piece, and we're talking about this as short-term rental, and there's B and B regulations over here, so they're not.
So just to clarify, that's why I added the wording at the end of what we see up there, taking into account comments made, because what I intended with that, there was a number of comments made, and there was incentivizing long-term rental, for example, and different options around that, and there was the possibility of expanding the B and B, rather zoning, and there were other comments, and Counsel Brett Gill's comments, and to the extent that Staff can rationalize them together, because some of them are a little opposed, that that was what I was looking for to come back. And so I was not trying to be restrictive, you know. So from my perspective, I think when Staff come back, those were the draft bylaw, we'll see some of the detail of what we were talking about today and see whether we get consensus or not on some of those points, or amend further. Enforcement, to me, is a budget issue, and so I wasn't expecting Staff to come back with an enforcement program. That was more trying to get everybody's heads around the fact that I think we may have enforcement on this, so I wasn't expecting that to come back. Does that help? That's what I was intending.
So it looks like Staff wants some clarification on all the other area. Would you mind?
I was just going to add that, given the comments that we've heard from multiple people around enforcement and its importance, we will look conceptually at sort of charting out the enforcement strategy, but it will be a budget decision at the end of the day how much of that strategy will be resourced every year.
Mayor Elliott? I think just in terms of process, we heard the majority of council supports C, but also need to explore some of these other ideas, because it could shift how we support C. So I think that's, that's all that we're trying to say. And I think Staff understand that. Yeah, I appreciate that clarification, and I would suggest that it would just be a more holistic view when we come back with draft regulations, that, you know, we might also include some incentives around taxation and other elements to it, and bring that back more as a complete package and less a narrow, short-term rental-only focus. So. And I imagine it's coming back to another committee level.
Thank you for accommodating us. We need option B.
So with that, any more discussion? You know, I will call question, it was, do you have a second on that? Counsel Brett, I think, second.
Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Same amount of motion, Harris.
Thank you. Motion to close?
Oh, yes. So can I have a motion to close? Mayor Elliott, Counsel Herbert, all the speakers, close. Thanks.